Good evening. Welcome to our December 5, 2023 City Council meeting. It is 7:08 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Callie Dupie from Faith Community Church, and Mayor Protem Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Legions. All rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the blessing of living and working in the city of West Covina. Tonight, Lord, we ask your blessing upon our city council. Lord, that you would give them wisdom in the decisions that they make and the deliberations. Thank you, Lord, for the community that's gathered here tonight to express their opinion as well. Father, we thank you for your work being done in our community and in our city, and we ask you to bless this meeting. Fathers, well, Lord, we lift up all of those who are serving us out on the streets tonight in our police department and our fire department. Lord, that you would be with them and keep them safe and use them, Lord, to do your work in our community. So, Lord, tonight, we commit this evening to you, and thank you for that your will is going to be done here in this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please put your right hand to your heart and face the flag and follow my lead. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Here.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report on, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And so tonight, we're going to start with a special presentation from our state senator, Senator Susan Rubio. She's here to provide the city of West Covina with legislative updates for the San Gabriel Valley and inland empire. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members for allowing me to come. Really quickly, briefly, to update all of you on some of the work that we've been doing in Sacramento and, of course, all our guests that are here with us today. I wanted to come to ensure that at least some of the things that happened in Sacramento are not a surprise, and you know some of the funding that's coming your way. Usually, we have...
It's... She's... Yeah.
Okay, there you go. So I wanted to just share that... Can we go to the next one, please? Since I got elected in 2018, so far, I've been able to bring $130 million directly to the San Gabriel Valley for different projects. In particular, one that I'm extremely proud of is creating the largest housing trust in the state of California. I did that in 2019 with a bill, and I was able to secure $36 million to ensure the local communities have funding when they wanted to build housing for seniors, veterans, and other folks in need. And so, so far, we started with five cities. Now we have 23 cities. That means that everyone's collaborating regionally to ensure that we take care of our communities, not just within our boundaries, but those outside as well. So right now, I wanted to share that there's a project where, you know, we make sure that there are little tiny communities where we take the homeless in particular from several communities to make sure that the people that we take directly off the streets are being fed three times a day. We make sure that we take care of their mental health issues, whatever they might be, and we also house families of three. When we see children in the street, they're able to not only have a safe place to eat and sleep and be taken care of, but we have a learning center for them as well. And that helps because after a certain month, amount of months, we are able to transition them into permanent apartments with an opportunity of a job. In collaboration with the housing trust, I was able to bring $1 million to the COG to develop SGV Works, where we take those that are most vulnerable, those that don't have skills, have been struggling, either homeless or on the verge of being homeless. Not only do they get training, but they get paid while they learn. And so I'm glad that we're able to provide those opportunities. I wanted to also share some of the... The next one. This year, I passed 15 bills. Normally, we're not as successful. At some point, you know, our bills get vetoed. This year, I have a great success rate. I was able to pass 15 of the 15 bills that I bought forward, and so I'm very proud of that. One in particular that's very unusual that I wanted to share with you is a bill that I just passed to acknowledge the loss of a child, meaning a lot of the times, we have bereavement leave when someone loses, you know, a grandparent or someone, right? But we don't acknowledge a lot of the families that are experiencing a lot of miscarriages, a lot of, you know, either failed adoptions, where people are traumatized, and it really is a loss for the family, but they never really are given any days to grieve and feel better and try again. And so my bill will allow a few days of protected leave, meaning they're able to ask for time off, just to make sure that if they had a miscarriage, you know, they feel supported. And so that's going to become law in January. The other one is the cancer registry. Since I started, I've been working in collaboration with the City of Hope. I have, as I'm sure many of you, family members that struggle with cancer or either survivors or have passed. And so I do a lot in that space, trying to ensure that there's enough funding for research. The first program I created was a recycling program. In California, we were not allowed to transfer medication from one patient to the other. And this was brought to me by a husband of a woman who had breast cancer, and they had automatically ordered medication, so it would keep coming in the mail. The wife passed away, and he had about $13,000 of unopened, unused medication. And when he tried to donate it to someone that needed the medication, it just... It wasn't allowed, and so he had to throw it away. So based on a bill that I passed, now doctors are able to take the medication, if it's unopened, and be able to provide it to someone that cannot afford the medication. And most of you, if you do know, it is really expensive, so hopefully, there's some families, some lives that we're going to save. So I'll skip the rest, because I know there's a lot of a heavy agenda. Let's go to the next one. The other funding that I wanted to share is that this year, I was able to bring $1.5 million to our local law enforcement. I know that you know where my policies lie and where my heart is. I work a lot with mothers who murder children. I work a lot with survivors of domestic violence, and I work a lot with our public safety, our police officers across the state, and we need to support what they're doing. So I was able to give seven cities around the San Gabriel Valley funding to either upgrade their equipment or just hand it over to see what the need was in the local communities. And we're trying to create right now a dispatch center to ensure that if any city is struggling with someone with mental health issues or someone that's homeless, a lot of the times, they're turned away because we don't have bed capacity. I say "we" as a city, wherever your community is. We don't have bed capacity, and so hopefully, the dispatch center that we're attempting to create would direct traffic to where there are beds available, where there's mental health professionals. So we don't leave people out in the street, but every city feels supported. I was able to put $100,000 just in the exploratory phase to ensure that we vet it. We work with our local city council members, our local organization, nonprofits, to see if we can make that work. And I also brought this year $8.5 million. I collaborated with the University of Laverne. You know, Laverne is a little bit more affluent community, and there's areas, in particular across the region, that are a little bit more underserved. And so Laverne, with the $8.5 million that I brought them, we're going to build a College of Health and Wellbeing in Ontario, right next to Pomona. There's a region there that's, like I said, underserved, that could use the support. And the good news is, it's going to produce the next generation of health coworkers, mental health professionals, as we know. The pandemic really, I guess, it put a spotlight on how hard healthcare workers, you know, work, and a lot of them retired, so we need to start working on replacing those that are retired. And not only will our students walk away with a career, but hopefully debt-free, because the commitment from Laverne is that they will pay tuition to those that cannot afford it. And the other college that I work with this year was East Los Angeles Community College. I was able to bring them $2.5 million. What we do know is that we have a lot of creative, very innovative students and young individuals and adults, and a lot of them will not spend four years in college. They cannot afford it, or, you know, they just have great ideas. They just need someone to propel them to the next level. So with the funding that I brought, ELOC, $2.5 million, we're going to create the Small Business Entrepreneurship Center. So anyone that's creative, that has an idea, that you don't know how to get your business off the ground, you go and they will provide mentors and people that can help you with everything you need to create a business. And it will also encourage those that have lost their businesses during the pandemic to reinvent themselves and be able to get support from the center. All right, let's go to the next one, please. These are some of the bills that I've passed. As I mentioned before, I'm really adamant about making our communities safer, and I work a lot. Most of my policies, especially on domestic violence and keeping our children safe from violence, needed attention. So this year, I was able to pass SB 14, which will hold perpetrators accountable. In the state of California, if someone was selling our children for sex, it was not considered a serious felony. Therefore, we could not prosecute to the full extent of the law. So my bill, SB 14, in collaboration with my colleague, you know, from the Senate, now changes the law, and it will now be a serious felony if someone commits that heinous crime. They should be held accountable. And the other one that I want to point out to you is Peakey's Law. I wanted to point out to... Anastasia is next to me in that picture. Her little boy was murdered. He was five years old, murdered by her ex-husband, who had a restraining order or was... I'm sorry. He had already shown signs of being violent, and the little boy had expressed it to his mother. And the court did not remove the child, and the child ended up being taken. I think you may remember the story. Like, nine months, he disappeared. And so Peakey's Law will now force judges to review these cases in a little bit more... in a more specific way, not only domestic violence cases, child custody cases, to understand the patterns of abuse and what happens during these divorce and separating situations. I have about 14 mothers that I work with, all who have lost their children from 15 all the way down. Same situation. We are approaching 1,000 childrens who have lost their lives this year in the United States. So we want to make sure that we tackle human trafficking, domestic violence, and that our communities are safer. Let's go to the next one, please. Like I said, there's a lot of details and data, and I don't want to take all of your time, but we're pushing really hard to create 11,000 plus new behavioral health beds and 26,000 patient treatment slots. As I mentioned before, what we struggle with is that we have people that need the help, but we don't have the capacity. And so we're trying to bring funding to ensure that we do have the capacity for those that need it. We can move on to the next one, please. I wanted to share that currently, I'm the chair of the San Gabriel Valley Caucus, and our jobs collectively, all the members from the San Gabriel Valley, is to bring funding to the region, to ensure that we have funding for transportation and other needs. We were able to overall bring $33.2 billion for transportation this past year, and many of you have been at the ground openings. And so again, it's not just my work in particular, but it's the caucus, the San Gabriel Valley Caucus. So that's all your assembly members and senators. And we'll continue to push this year. We already have our priorities, and hopefully, that will help. The next one, please. So I was able to bring also to... directly to the single mountains $12 million that specifically focused on climate change, resiliency, and we're working a lot on water conservation projects, building parks, open space, and making sure that our children have clean air. And I'm also co-author to SB 867, which we're pushing to ensure that we get $75 million directly, once again, to our region to make sure that we're prepared, since we know that climate change is one of those issues that continues to be, you know, pressing. And so I'll move on to the next one. Thank you. And like I said, there's so much to share, but I want to just at least give you an overall. I know that we have a lot of members of the community that want to, you know, have comments, and so I want to be respectful of your time. And so if there's any questions, my office is always happy to answer any questions you may have. And Mayor, council members, anything that I can answer for you.
Yes. Thank you, State Senator Rubio. I believe a couple of my colleagues have some questions or comments. Would that be all right?
Of course.
Really quick. Mayor Protem Wu.
Yeah. No, thank you, Senator, to come to West Covina. Welcome to West Covina. I know you've been around all the time, and thank you for that. I think you're the champion to bring all the funding for San Gabriel Valley. The only issue I have is, look like West Covina didn't get a pie, a piece of pie for all this funding. Hopefully, okay, West Covina can get a piece of pie. Okay, get some funding. Okay, just, for example, I think we have to build the Station Number One, because the Station Number One condemned, and the Station Number Three, we have other issue. So is that possible, as you're champion for our public safety, can make...
Well...
...from the state to give us some funding for that?
No, absolutely. I think you might be forgetting, but the reason other cities got funding this year is that you were my first city. If you remember, I passed a bill specifically for your city that was able to give you $3 million for, you know, your streets and upgrades. And I also gave the police department directly $300,000, because they were, I think, needing an ambulance or cars or, you know, I don't remember. But, you know, I'm trying to make sure that every city gets something, and you were my first choice, so I'll circle back, make sure that we continue to give you the funding that you need. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your generosity and as our rep of our senator. Hopefully, we can help our, okay, Station One and Station Three, and that will cost so much money, and we try to use our general fund and all the issue to build, and hopefully can have the state help. Thank you.
Thank you. And at the same time, I want to thank public safety. I know that you had a great toy giveaway turnout this weekend, and they were out there, you know, managing the traffic and helping out, and it was a great event. So I want to thank the police and fire who were out there with all the children. It was really great. It was this weekend, and hopefully, a lot of families, you know, now have a smile on their face. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I believe Councilman Cantos, did you have a comment or question?
Just real quick. First of all, thank you, Senator Rubio, for always just being around our community. We really appreciate it. You're always so wonderfully engaged. What recommendations would you have for us to take advantage of the different programs that you have? Let's say, with mental health supports for the community, so we can have West Covina residents participate in that? Or let's say, the East Los Angeles College opportunities for business, so that way, West Covina business owners can take advantage. So can you talk about how the things that you've done throughout the valley could actually be leveraged for West Covina residents specifically?
Sure. Well, first of all, anyone that wants to enroll in East Los Angeles Community College, we're just gaining the program off the ground, to be clear, but once it's up and running, anybody can register at East Los Angeles Community College. Same thing with the extension of University of Laverne. It's being currently created and built, which will bring a lot of good, you know, paying jobs. But once it's up and running, same situation, anyone from any community can enroll, and if you're low-income and struggling, you would get that tuition paid. What I would also recommend is, you know, I did bring $36 million that's sitting in a housing trust, and we do have a board. Just by way of example, Pomona leveraged that, and they created two affordable housing units. Went before the board, and they were able to get $4 million. And for the public listening, that is free money that I brought for them to be able to help build those much-needed units. Hambra was also able to take $2 million, I believe. Ballin Park has taken $3.5 million. I think it was also Azusa's taking advantage, Monobello. So really, what it requires is for you to decide, like, if there's a project that you want in your city. Because I believe in local control, as a former city council member, I leave it up to the council to decide what they want, where it's going to be, what location. And once you have a shovel-ready project, that means it has to be ready to go, you go petition for funding. And because there's not a lot of projects being built, almost always, everyone gets the funding that they request. I would also encourage our youth and those struggling with job opportunities to reach out to the COG. The Council of Government is the ones that... They received the million dollars that created SGV Works. And so if someone's struggling with a job or, you know, out of a job, you can go to the COG and maybe recommend some of your community members to see if they qualify. And it's a, I believe it's a 15-week program. Once they graduate, they are able to be placed, but in the meantime, I believe they get paid a salary while they learn a skill.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Senator Rubio, for being here today and giving us this presentation.
Thank you so much, and have a good evening. And to all of you, happy holiday. I know I may not be back, so thank you and be safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Now, a presentation that I think we've been waiting for a while. Presentation by the County Library with an update on the construction taking place at the LA County Library in West Covina. So I invite Jesse Walker Lance, Assistant Public Works Director for LA County, and Clifford Cotier, Assistant Director of Capital Projects and Facility Services for LA County, to the front. So these gentlemen are here to provide the city of West Covina with an update. That update, we've all been waiting for. We are excited. Yes, so the floor is yours, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the city council, staff, and everyone. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm Jesse Walker Lance, Assistant Director of Public Services for LA County Library. Also have here Cliff Cotier, Assistant Director of Capital Projects and Facility Services. We're here to give you a few quick updates about the ongoing projects at the West Covina Library. Next slide, please. So, next slide, please. All right, thank you. So here's a quick agenda for what I'd like to cover. We'll give you a little bit of background information, and then we're going to talk about two projects, a facilities reinvestment program project, as well as a library refurbishment and modernization project that are both happening. We'll briefly discuss the budget, as well as the timeline for these projects. We'll give you a preview of the furniture and finishes that you will see when the library reopens in spring of 2024, and we'll also describe the interim services that we have been providing while these projects have been happening. Next slide, please. So the West Covina Library, we have been located here in your civic center since 1961, and the last major renovation and expansion of that building was in 1975. West Covina Library is one of our largest locations at over 42,000 square feet, and it serves this community of over 100,000 residents. The two projects that I'm going to describe are both funded by the county and come to a total of $12.75 million. And as I mentioned, the project is expected to be completed in early 2024 for a move-in and a spring 2024 reopening. Next slide, please. So as I said, there are actually two separate, yet concurrent, projects taking place within the library. One is part of a facilities reinvestment program. This is a program by the Chief Executive Office of the County that is there to address kind of major deferred maintenance projects in all county buildings across the county, not just library. The second is a general refurbishment and modernization of the building, and that has been in fund internally by our own LA County Library Department. Both of these projects are being managed by LA County Internal Services Department, or ISD. Next slide, please. So the facilities reinvestment project is the larger of the two. This one has a budget of $10.8 million. First, it includes energy-efficient enhancements, including a replacement of the entire lighting system with energy-efficient lighting, as well as the major components of the electrical system throughout the building, including two motor control centers, six electrical panels, and a transformer. It also significantly replaces the HVAC system, including four indoor and outdoor custom-packaged air handling units, two chillers, a condenser, and controllers, and then a modernization of the elevator. So that includes all of the kind of mechanical bits of the elevator, as well as a refurbishment of the interior, so the buttons and everything are new, as well as control panel... I'm sorry, control panels, ventilation, and all of the systems that serve the elevator. Next slide, please. So all of the improvements that I just talked about from the facilities investment program are major mechanical systems upgrades necessary to keep the building operating and efficient for the coming decades. But the only improvement that you would actually see is a customer walking into the building after these would be the inside of the elevator, and we wanted to ensure that after this closure, we were able to reopen with a significantly modernized library that would really enhance and improve our customers' library experience. Which brings us to the second project. This is smaller, but substantial, with a budget of just over $1.8 million. The scope of this second project includes all-new flooring throughout the public areas of the building, including vinyl plank tiles in the entryway and new carpet throughout, a new custom customer service desk and self-checkout machines, all-new shelving and furniture, new paint and signage, a digital message board, and a refresh of the landscaping. Next slide, please. This is a quick overview of the budget for this project. As I said, the facilities reinvestment program project is $10.89 million, and then the refresh and modernization of the library comes in at $1.85 million for a total budget of $12.75 million of improvements that are going to the West Covina Library. Next slide, please. This is the timeline for the project. We began the start of electrical and HVAC work in August of 2021. Substantial completion of those two projects were in July of 2023. Completion of the flooring and elevator projects were in October 2023, this fall. We're estimating completion of the furniture, fixtures, and equipment in early winter 2024, and an anticipated reopening in spring of 2024. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. So there have been significant delays throughout this project, and I'll go over just a few of them here. Notably, there wasn't asbestos abatement required, so over 18,000 square feet of asbestos abatement in association with the flooring. There was also an issue with the concrete slab having an unacceptable level of moisture content that had to be addressed. The ceiling structural deficiencies and fire rating, those are associated because of all of the new lighting and all of the new ductwork for the HVAC system. When the ceiling had to go back together, we had to bring that up to current standards. And then, of course, supply chain issues. This, you know, this was begun in, you know, still kind of the middle of the pandemic, and as anyone who's been doing any kind of work knows, there have been difficulty with availability of materials, and that has also caused significant delays. Next slide, please. So we do want to show you some sample images of the new furniture that you'll be seeing when we reopen our doors. West Covina, it's a really large building. There's a lot of furniture in there, so this is just a sample, just to give you an idea. So this is the floor plan. I realize that it is too small for you to see the detail, and I really just wanted to make a special note that we were replacing all of the shelving in the building. It's a large building. There's a lot of shelving. It's a huge upgrade. And we took the opportunity, because we were replacing the shelving, we were able to totally revise the layout. And so that means that we're able to reorganize the inside of the libraries, kind of push all of the shelving together, and create more inviting spaces to work and study and read. Okay, you will be getting an all-new custom customer service desk. So this is a photograph taken at our Florence Library, which opened and manned May of 2023. The desk for West Covina is very, very similar to this, slightly different colors and finishes, but of course, it's much larger, because West Covina is a very large library. As I said, there will be all-new flooring. Oh, sorry. Thank you. The flooring that you can see around the customer service desk in this, this is actually identical to the flooring that'll be used in the entryway and lobby. And then the carpet throughout the building will also be refreshed. This is not what the carpet will look like, but I can tell you that the teen and children's area have highlights with different colors. Here's an example of the cantilever shelving that will be installed. This is at our Live Oak Library, and this will also be very similar, just slightly different colors in the finishes, but otherwise identical to what's going to be installed in your library. All-new readers tables in all areas of the library. And I want to make a special point. The example on the left, this is what the adult tables will look like. The example on the right is the children's areas, children areas tables. All of the readers tables throughout the building will have convenience power, so that means that anywhere, virtually anywhere you sit in the building, you'll be able to charge your devices, including in the children's area and the teen area. I started my career as a librarian in that building 17 years ago. That is an amazing upgrade. People used to fight over the electrical outlets. In 1961, no one thought that everyone would have something to charge, and so the fact that there will be power throughout the building truly will make this a contemporary Examples of readers chairs. The chair on the left is the... is an example of the adult chair. The children's chair looks exactly like it, only is a little bit scaled down. The chair on the right is an example from the teen area, and there are multiple colors of those. There will be soft seating throughout the building, so kind of lounge areas in the adult, teen, and children's areas, and this is just a few examples of that kind of furniture. Finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the interim service that we have been providing to this community throughout these projects, which we know have taken some time. providing to this community throughout these projects, which we know have taken some time. So when the projects began in August of 2021, we reverted back to the service that we had been doing during the pandemic, which is sidewalk service. Oh, next slide, please. And so this is basically our contactless curbside pickup, and so the idea is you can go online to the catalog and place a hold. You can call our staff. We can help you place a hold, bring in materials from any of our 85 community library locations, pick it up, pick it up when it's available. We'll bring it out to the curb for you. Staff are there during regular hours of operations, answer any questions that you might have, and help you access any kinds of services that you might need. These services have been really well utilized by the community. So from August 2021 through the end of October, we had circulated over 118,000 items by curbside pickup, which is really pretty extraordinary. And I do want to mention that it's not just books, you know, DVDs, magazines. We do have laptop, so Chromebook and hotspot kits that you can check out as well. We know that that's something that a lot of people came to the library for. Speaking of which, throughout this whole, throughout the the whole project, we never turned off the Wi-Fi, and actually, we extended it, so it is available in the parking lot. This is actually, it's something that we offer at all of our locations, but it's been really well utilized with over 31,000 Wi-Fi sessions. We know a lot of people rely on the library for high-speed internet service, and we're continuing to provide that outside of our building. And as I mentioned, our staff are there to assist with any questions. We've answered over 46,000 information and reference questions during these during these projects. And hopefully, next slide, please. Hopefully, you've seen us out and about a bit. We have been going out to community events in schools when we can. We have participated in a lot of city events, like your Centennial City Celebration. We've done class visits at local schools. We've gone to school resource fairs. We've done school assemblies. We have done some library programs despite the not being able to access the inside of the buildings. We've held a flu shot clinic in the parking lot and summer discovery programs outside. We've had art activity kits for our customers of all ages that you can pick up. We also have COVID-19 salt test kits that are available to pick up at any of our locations. So with that, I would like to thank you very much for giving me a few minutes to give you these brief updates. We're looking forward to welcoming you all back to a refreshed and very modernized library in spring of 2024. Our excellent library manager, Wan Wan Zong, will be continuing to provide you updates on that opening. Cliff and I are available if you have any questions.
Yes, I believe some of our colleagues have some questions. I'm going to start with Councilman Kanto, and then Mayor Protem Wu. Councilman Kanto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the way that the new layout has is being constructed, does, is there a vision for the library being a center of learning in other ways, let's say, with seminar rooms or classrooms and that sort of thing, so that way people will know just know to come to the library for broader learning besides just checking out books even virtually, but also having events there and so forth? Can you just describe that a little bit more?
Yes, excellent, and thank you. That is a very great question, and I appreciate that you recognize that libraries can be a center of learning like that. So yes, in addition to the lighter library meeting room, which existed before, there is a seminar room. We also took the opportunity to create a new teen study room that didn't exist before, and I think just in general, the new layout is going to be more conducive to group study. You know, the fact that people can plug in and kind of work side by side on something anywhere in the library, I think it'll be much more like a modern learning environment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I just have two quick questions. When you could complete it? Okay, when we can have a tour to see inside about this beautiful improvement? So can you arrange the tour so we can take a look about how it's been progressed? Okay, and the second thing is, we really want to know when you can complete this project so our children can utilize, because right now they have no place to go, and you know library is very important to our children. So would you please answer the question?
Absolutely. So thank you, and thank you also. We appreciate that you recognize how important the library is for the children. We're anticipating a spring 2024 reopen.
When 2024?
April-ish 2024.
April?
April.
April, ladies and gentlemen. April, we want to see the grand opening and ribbon cutting.
So as you mentioned, there's quite some challenges along the way. We had COVID. We had supply chain issues, and we had some change orders that had to be negotiated and, you know, went out for solicitation. So we understand the timeline issues, but we're back on track now, and we can guarantee that we're going to be.
I hope you understand, we have a lot of pressure from our resident. Okay, they really want this library reopened.
And so do we.
And the curb pickup, this doesn't work because they want to go inside, especially the children after school. They want a place to go. So we really need this big library open, so April next year. And can we have a tour? Any possibility?
Sure. It's in disarray right now. We have a lot of stuff going on.
Would you please arrange?
We can definitely, we'll definitely get together with our CLM and our folks and get you a tour going, but we're back on track. We were really not control of the project. We had Internal Services District for the county doing it, and so in the interim, we tried to do these additional considerations to beautify the project as a whole, so it's going to be a better opening and more facilitate a better environment going forward. So, but we definitely will work to get you a timeline and.
Would you please ASAP so we can go inside to see what's going on, and we can go back to our resident and say, hey, it's almost there, April, we're going to reopen. But thank you so much for coming to give us. Yep, okay. So we waiting for your information when we can have a tour. Okay, would you event with our city manager? Thank you.
Will do.
Councilwoman Lopez Viero.
Thank you. So on the presentation, you gave those estimated completion with the recent on October. Just wanting to check, are all those estimated completion dates are actually completed, including the last one in October?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, and then I know our biggest concern, because it's almost four years of construction work. I know, and we greatly appreciate her when she comes in, gives us an update, but I think the frustration was she'll give us a timeline, and then we look forward to it, and then, you know, it comes and nothing happens. So I know you mentioned April. All construction that is happening currently, they are on track, and what happens if they don't meet that April deadline?
We, we, everything's substantially completed now, where we've received some of the furniture. We're starting to do some of the final improvements, and so the elevator has been completed. The larger, the major milestones have been completed. The fire has been signed off, so we are on track, and it's just for us to kind of put it together now. And so we, we're on schedule for spring. That's why we're saying spring timeline is because there's some wiggle room there to make sure that we have one final date and one final guarantee that we'll be open at that time, but we'll get with you guys in spring, early spring, early-ish. Once we're more finalized, we'll get you guys in there, get you guys a tour of the facility, and we will be on track to open in spring.
So we can safely say by the end of April, April 30th?
We will do our best.
Okay. All right.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you. I really appreciate your presentation. Well overdue, but I just want to say thank you for coming and giving a presentation and letting our audience know and letting our constituents know that we have a plan in April or in the springtime, we will have a new library. So that's all. And we're going to have a tour, too. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Sounds like we're at the end of the renovation show, and you guys are going to be doing the last little bit of painting, and we'll get into there in April. All right, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, before moving to oral communication, we have an adjournment tonight. Centenarian Edmund Zakour passed away peacefully at home, 101 years old, on November 15, 2023, surrounded by caring family. He was a resident of West Covina since 1978. Ed proudly served his country during World War II as part of the U.S. Marine Corps from 1942 to 1945. For his outstanding service, he was awarded the Bronze Star. Ed also served in the U.S. Marine Corps Reserves during the Korean conflict from 1950 to 1952. Ed had a remarkable career in freight transportation sales and management that spanned over six decades. Ed's strong work ethic and dedication to his profession were evident throughout his long and successful career. He began his journey in the freight transportation industry as a salesperson, gradually working his way up the ladder to become a sales manager and executive. Ed's extensive knowledge and expertise in the field made him a respected figure within the industry. Despite his professional achievements, Ed understood the importance of family and cherished his role as a loving husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. His family-oriented nature was one of his defining traits. One of Ed's proudest accomplishments was his 50-year marriage to his late wife, Mary Ann Riopel Zakour. Their love for each other served as an inspiration to their children and grandchildren. Together, they built a large and loving family that will continue to honor their memory. Outside of work and family life, Ed had several hobbies and interests that brought him joy. He was an avid baseball fan who enjoyed watching the LA Dodgers. Additionally, he took great pleasure in coaching his son's Little League teams when they were young. Ed also had a passion for reading biographies of historical figures. In his retirement, he was a dedicated volunteer at the West Covina Public Library for many years and left an impression on all who met him. So tonight, we adjourn in Ed's memory. We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Mayor, I have 14 speaker cards.
Okay, for the interest of time, I would like to set the speaking time to three minutes. Do I have a consensus? Okay, so I want to make sure, I know a lot of people have important things to say, so I want to make sure everyone gets through. So can we call the first speaker?
Yes, Mayor. John Schumaker, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Roy Esker.
I have a question to our Mayor Protem. Do you pay any attention when somebody's giving a presentation? Because the question you asked was, when is library going to open? And the man said, "Spring of 2024," during his presentation. I mean, come on, pay a little attention to it. You know, you've spent more time on the library than, you know, complaining about they're not on schedule, they're not meeting budgets, they're not doing this, they're not doing that. You know, how dare you? Well, where's the financial analysis for the Health Department? Where's the financial analysis on Big League Dreams? Where's the financial analysis on anything that you're doing? But you ripped this poor guy because he can't answer back, and he's simply doing his job, and you can't do what you direct. While we're at it, since, you know, Mr. Mayor, I've always been told that the mayor helps set the agenda, or at least you could bring this up. Where is the report on Tony Wu's conduct towards our chief, our fire chief, Chief Capelli? Why isn't that put out and discussed? Could we also have a discussion on the loss of $4.1 million that according to my sources, we had won or was winning until our former city manager got up there and talked, and our Mayor Protem talked? They didn't believe a word out of his mouth, and we had won. We were winning. Where is that analysis? You know, I can tell that that report on Chief Capelli probably isn't very good, because he would be, he'd want that thing published and would be screaming from the highest point in West Covina that it cleared him. You know, the lawsuit should be public, brought up, because he had no problem when a case was dismissed that was brought against him to make sure that the city attorney gave every detail of why it was dismissed. Maybe we should have the city attorney give every detail as to why we lost $4.1 million. If you'd like, I'll even get a couple of jurors to come in and explain it to you. So, but welcome, Mr. Mayor, and we'll talk to you soon. Bye.
R. Robinson, followed by Roy Esker, followed by William Williams.
So our transition from a constitutional federal system to a communist martial law medical tyranny continues. People don't understand the United States. There is no longer a political left or right. There is only one uniparty. The government is a private club, and we peasants, we ain't in it. We ain't in the club. Congress passes a clause, a fake law in a 3,000-page pork bill, which they consider a get-out-of-jail-free card, but Congress may not pass laws like the PREP Act, the get-out-of-jail-free card, that nullifies a state law. This is not the way our system works. The Tenth Amendment must be held high. In thinking about this, you cannot contract to commit a crime that nullifies state laws. Each of the 50 states is its own country, essentially, according to the law, with its own state constitution, state legislature, and court system. But the light of truth may prevail in Texas. There Pfizer is being sued on a five-count indictment over marketing deception. Texas Attorney General Scott Paxton is taking on Big Pharma. The subject is of the suit is Pfizer's great deception campaign, partly, and partly an unconscionable contract clause, product liability fraught with lack of product effectiveness and inefficaciousness, sold under a host of marketing lies that Pfizer is accused of committing in the indictment. Here I'm highlighting a case that was reported December 5 on Z Media in regarding the state of Texas sues Pfizer and using New Zealand whistleblower data, which potentially ignites a federally sponsored artificial intelligence wildfire. In other words, AI is going to be replacing our, a computer is going to replace our government agencies. Potentially, this is a $350 billion precedent-setting lawsuit. So kudos to Paxton for attacking a defective product sold with lies, bribery, and fraud.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We need to give other people time. We need to give other people time. Bill, Bill, thank you.
Roy Esker, followed by William Williams, followed by Jerry Pachas.
Hello, it's my first time here. I'm here because of the two back-to-back accidents where I live, Amar and Westport, and I wanted to ask the council if I could propose some potential solutions in for that problem. I think some traffic calming measures would be a great thing to study, because I have lived in that area for quite a while, and I noticed the cars come down Amar very quickly going westbound. So I think one such traffic calming measure we should study is reducing the road space, so reducing the car lanes, maybe making the rightmost lane on the westbound side a bus-only lane, a prioritized bus lane, so that way you speed up the 486 and the 178, and then reduce car traffic by forcing drivers to be more attentive and slow down. I think it's similar logic that traffic engineers employ when driving like in mountain roads and other places where the geography and built environment forces drivers to focus more, and they have to pay more attention to the road and traffic safety. Most people in our apartment complex mostly advocated for a sign, which there already is a sign that didn't work. is a sign that didn't work, and left turn signal at Westport, but I don't think that goes far enough. I think pylons in a protected bike lane and maybe a protected bus lane would be a great solution for that, because it would help reduce and prevent fatalities like this one in the future, or, sorry, these fatalities in the future, several, plural. And as someone who uses that bus stop on Amar and Westport and Amar and Shadow Oak, because I take the bus regularly, because I can't drive, and I use that, I'm a pedestrian in that area, and it kind of, it's scary, it's very precarious, because the cars go so quickly. And I would like to see several transit improvements, as well as traffic calming measures employed there to improve public safety, such as pylons or bollards to protect a bike lane or a bus-only lane on the right-hand side, at least on the westbound side going south, like, or westbound side going downhill from Shadow Oak to Westport, if not also on the eastbound side when Shadow Oak starts on Amar, just to help pedestrians like myself and people who take the bus, but also to improve public safety by slowing cars down and making them more attentive and more careful by reducing traffic volume. Thank you.
William Williams, followed by Jerry Pachas, followed by Elsie Messman.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Wu, members of the City Council. I am William Williams, and I live in the south end of the city. I've been a resident for over 40 years. I'm here to address you tonight regarding weekly street sweeping. We had it at one time, we no longer do. We'd like to have it again. I've spent countless hours picking up trash on Centuus Street from Amanda through La Puente Road. I did so as early as last Tuesday. I picked up an entire shopping cart full of trash. I witnessed people parked on the street doing drugs. I saw used condoms, needles, and a whole host of trash. Lots of trash. It never goes away. In addition to the trash, there's a good foot of leaves along the curb. It never gets picked up. We need to have street sweeping on a consistent basis. We need to have parking patrol on a consistent basis, and we need to see signage that says "No parking," "Street sweeping." We've lived with this condition far too long. We need to see it change. We have a problem now with vermin in this area because of the trash in the curbs, and we have a problem with the needles and the leftover drug paraphernalia. Children walk through this area all the time on their way to school. This is why it really needs to change, and we really do need your support to make a change. And I'm hopeful that this will come forward and that there will be change, because I'm kind of tired of picking up trash, and my neighbors are too. And as I said, we do this on a regular basis, and it's totally unacceptable. We used to have a really clean city. We no longer do. So I'd like to see the changes, and my neighbors would like to see the changes, and it's time for us to do just that. Perhaps you can start an anti-littering campaign throughout the whole city. We could certainly do it as a community. You could publish flyers, you could put it in the newsletter about how not to litter, how to take care of our streets, how to take care of our community, what we should and shouldn't do. These are easy fixes. There's just no excuse for all this litter. There really isn't, and it's time to see a change. So I'd like for you to please consider weekly street sweeping, also the signage, and also show some more initiative regarding anti-litter. Thank you.
Jerry Pachas, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Ray Vargas.
Good evening, Jerry Pachas, West Covina neighbors. Tonight, I'm going to speak on the council's proposed compensation increase. At the last meeting, I mentioned Senate Bill 329, which goes into effect January 1st, 2024. The council appears to have focused on the feel-good reasons for increasing council compensation, but is clearly ignoring limitations on dollar amounts. Tonight, I will comment on dollar amounts. SB 329 amends Government Code Section 36516. Part of that amendment specifies a dollar amount by population. For example, the amendment specifies that in cities of over 75,000 up to and including 150,000 population, the amount is $1,900 per month. City staff states West Covina's population is 108,243. Your proposed amount is 2,027. Why are you going over the $1,900 limit? Another part of that amendment specifies two methods for increases: 5% for each calendar year from the operative date of the last adjudgment, or an amount equal to inflation since January 1st, 2024. You're clearly using the 5% for each calendar year. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, an Attorney General ruled that the 5% per year percentage increase must be applied only once with no compounding. The amendment specifies equal to 5% per year. Equal to 5% per year means 5% per year. You're compounding to give yourselves $2,027 a month instead of $1,645 the uncompounded month. By doing so, you're going over the limit. SB 329 does have a mechanism for councils to use to increase their compensation beyond the amounts provided by the Government Code. Submit the question to the voters at any municipal election. Are you planning to do that? Lastly, it is very disappointing to see you are returning department head-director benefits, but now, without using that name, you're spending our tax dollars and raising our fees and giving yourself a huge 256% compensation increase. Most people only get a 5% or 10% increase. I will end my remarks with a comment Mayor Pro Tem Tony Wu said on July 2nd, 2018 at a special budget meeting, that I think most residents would agree with. He said, "We don't have a revenue issue, we have a spending issue." Thank you.
Elsie Messman. Elsie Messman, followed by Ray Vargas, followed by Midlife Crisis.
Good evening. Excuse me, my name is Elsie Messman. Congratulations to our new mayor. First of all, at the last meeting, Covina Councilman Wu stated that the ex-manager was working on lighted street signs. She was not the one asking for the street stop signs at Shadow Oak Drive, as you had mentioned. If she was doing that, why did we have to get 220 signatures, then give it to the city, then they turned around and gave it to TransTech, and then it was done in May of last year? Then you had to go to a meeting at the West Covina Traffic Committee, then the council had to approve it, and the traffic committee only approved one sign instead of two, like we had asked. You did say that we needed it, but went no further. Then Councilman Cantos asked the attorney if he could have changed the article, including Woodgate, which you failed to do. Thank you, Councilman Cantos. It did pass. Secondly, as for the bars going up to Shadow Oak Park, I had suggested that many years ago, and was told by the police that they were scared to go there, up there at night. And that I can understand. I have seen cars go up there at 9:00 in the evening, and with the lights being as they are, it is not safe. So if something happens, it's going to be your fault. Number three, why in the world was code enforcement be in such a hurry to give out parking tickets? They didn't even have new tickets. They wrote a $3.95 on the ticket next to the $60 fine. My neighbor called to see what the $3.95 was for, and he was told it was for processing fee for the ticket. Instead of printing new tickets with the right amount, the city let code enforcement give out these tickets, and what a disgrace. Looks like code enforcement wants to look good, and you can bet a lot of people are on guard now, and you won't get that money again. And why don't we ask the gardeners to pay a fee of $50 or $75 a year and leave the residents alone? This city cannot be trusted anymore. Thank you.
Ray Vargas, followed by Midlife Crisis, followed by Myrna Cicero.
Ray Vargas, at 6:29, North Vincent and Puente. You asked for...
You're good, you're good, sorry.
You asked for the young lady for a piece of pie? You think you deserve a piece of pie if you don't support? I don't think so. First of all, you're the wrong person sitting up there. From Diaz all the way over here, you guys got to go. Gentlemen, you're asking for help, the accidents and stuff like that? I've been asking four years. Hasn't happened. You know, there's been tragedies every weekend. Do you care? Do you care? Do you care? Do you care? I had her husband come and sit in my front living room and blew smoke up my ass about the things he was going to change and do in West Covina. He better not ever show up to my house again. He better not ever show up to my house again. You know? Adario, he was smart. He got the hell out of here, and he told me why. You know? You guys are just puppets of him. That's all you guys are. You guys are puppets of fucking Tony. Excuse my language, but I'm tired of this. We got a power pole on Puente and Vincent. It's cracked at the bottom. It's just holding by electric wire. It's ready to tip over, ready to fall off. Have you guys did anything about it? You guys don't give a shit. Why? You know? You are our district, and you're trying to run for Assembly and do other shit like this? Take care of the shit you got on your plate. You know? It's bad. This city is bad. And then you bring some moron from City of Industry, he's sitting right up there, Milan. You know? We don't need code enforcement. We need police officers. To hell with the code enforcement. You know, they're all just puppets of Milan, too. You know? I patrol. I run the north part of West Covina. I cleared out a lot of shit right there.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Midlife Crisis, followed by Myrna Cicero, followed by Desiree Fuentes.
I'm at the Midlife Crisis at the age of 48, I bought my first bike. That's why I'm part of the bike community, and we are one. If something happens to us, we all stand. Now, Mayor, you guys here, I urge you guys to drive these streets, check out these lights, go in your own cars and just sit at corners and see what the major lights are. I found out about this accident, the three riders getting killed, two on Thanksgiving Day. Thanksgiving Day. These parents here will probably never have a Thanksgiving again, and then another one the day after Thanksgiving. Why? Because of people like you not going around looking in the streets. All you guys are doing is looking in your pockets, making sure you got that mansion, making sure you got that big home, making sure you got food in your belly and freaking taking care of your own families, but you're not taking care of your city family, the ones that pay your salary, the ones that employ you. We are your bosses. But all government today, we are the puppets now, because nobody stands up. And when people do stand up to things like this, you guys turn your heads. Mayor, I did an interview today on Telemundo, and I'm telling you right now from my heart, I will find all these problems. I want your personal number. You and I can go driving around, you and I can go looking around, but I am not going to rest until all these lights and all these speeders are taken care of. Mark my words, I'm an old-time activist. I've been arrested, I've been harassed by cops for my activism, and now it's time for me to get back into it. I'm represented right here by Black Widow, it's my attorneys. I got the backing now. Look at all the representatives in the back. Look at all these families that are sitting here that their family was killed on Thanksgiving Day and the day after, and tell me that you can only sit on your ass and only worry about yourself and not your constituents and not your family of the city. This is your family. These are just not a pocket for you. Other families are going to come up and speak about certain other things, the things I want to talk about, but I'm going to let them bring it up. But one thing I'm going to bring up, why is it? You can go on my live stream on Midlife Crisis, and you can see what I'm doing. You can see that intersection. Why is it a quarter mile down the street, there's left turn signals, but on a freaking blind spot, there's not? There's not? Really? Who in the hell designed that? Whoever designed that should be fired and should be held accountable, and those are the guys who should be paying these families' funerals.
Myrna Cicero, followed by Desiree Fuentes, followed by Zoe Fuentes.
This is my son, Robert Jesús Escalante Jr. He lost his life after Thanksgiving. Coming home, he always did the right thing. He was a responsible person. He followed the rules. He always did the right thing. He had an enthusiasm for cars and bikes. He took the education course that he needed at Mount Zach, Mount San Antonio College, to be able to ride the bike, because my son always did the right thing. His life could have been saved if that intersection had the right traffic lighting. The day before on Thanksgiving Day, two other lives were lost. In the same way, the car driver could have had a turning signal that would allow the opposing traffic to stop so that person could go into the residential complex that is there. My son wanted the world to be a better place. He would participate in community events that benefited, they were for a good cause and benefited communities. He did fundraising with his friends for autism and to raise funds for college tuition. My son was a good kid. He had his whole life ahead of him. He was going to college, working. He had just landed his dream job at Honda West Covina because he wanted, he always wanted to grow in the automotive industry, and that was his dream. He thought he could master his skills there, and he will not be able to obtain that dream that he so much wanted because of this. I won't be able to hug my son again. I won't be able to tell him I love him. I plead the city council to please do something about those lights, so that no mother should have to suffer and bear the pain of losing their child. No family should have to suffer the pain of losing a loved one. And I plead the city council to please do something so that no other... And I plead the city council to please do something so that no other family can lose a loved one. Thank you.
Desiree Fuentes, followed by Zoe Fuentes, followed by Remy.
Hello. My name is Desiree Fuentes. My son was a 20-year-old killed on Thanksgiving with his girlfriend. My son's name was Adrian, and his girlfriend's name was Mallory. My son was a hard worker. He was a welder for a living. His boss taught him so much, he started working on semis, cranes, hydraulics. His boss just enrolled him in truck driving school at only 20 years old. He was very responsible. I know this is very easy for you guys to just, you can simply, it's not coming out of your pocket at all. It's not like it's your guys' money, it's not gonna affect your guys' pay, nothing. You just have to make sure it's done to fix this light. Like, I mean, it's people's lives. Are you saying any other? I'm sorry. Yes, library is important, but is that more important than a person's life? Three people's lives, two people one day and within 27 hours, another life in the same exact spot, 27 hours later. Now, is that more important than a library? Or is the library more important than a life? I mean, honestly, like, just put everything to the side and save lives. Make this important. It's not coming out of your guys' pockets, it's not affecting anything like that. It's just a matter of you guys putting it forward and doing it. I mean, a 20-year-old boy, 20-year-old son is, he's lost and he has so much potential. And then, but my friend Casey Valera, she actually started a petition and got 3,190 votes, our signatures, to, to help get this light changed because, honestly, like I said, the grant was already given. It's very, I mean, you guys aren't losing anything. Just put everything to the side and make people's lives matter first. That's all it is. Thank you.
You could give it to our city clerk.
Zoe Fuentes, followed by Remy, followed by Jim Grivage.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Zoe. I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of myself and my family, also for these two. Truly, these two are some of the best people you would ever meet. And the issue with this specific case is it hits home for me, but as I've gone through and I've looked at stuff, this has been an issue since 1996. You're telling me lives have been lost since 1996, and nobody's ever thought, maybe we should change something? Maybe, maybe there's something we can fix, and it's a simple fix. It really is. I'm 16, and I know that. I can tell you right now, that light just needs to have an engineering fix. You guys need to talk to engineers and say, hey, instead of a light, can we put a signal so that those people turning know, hey, don't go because there's somebody on the other side? Because people don't think, and they just go, and they think about themselves. And as I say that, it's just the fact that when you guys don't do anything, it makes it seem like you don't care. If you care, thank you, but right now it doesn't seem like it does. There is three people who lost their lives, three people who had a life, who had family, who had friends, who had people that truly loved and cared for them and that they truly loved and cared about. And so, my thought, when I think about this, I think of the fact of, it's not a matter of if it's ever gonna happen, it's a when is it gonna happen again? And who is it gonna happen to? So my question to you guys is, who, when it happens to who, is that gonna matter? When it happens to one of your children, is that when it's finally gonna matter and you guys make the change? Because if so, what are we doing here? What are we truly doing here? Because it needs to matter when it's somebody else's kid. It needs to matter when it's not just one of your family members. It needs to matter now. Because I shouldn't have to have little pieces of my brother that I remember. I shouldn't carry a picture around and have this be the only thing I have left. I shouldn't. He should still be here. And if that gets a change, he would still be here. If the simple fact that there was a turn signal instead of a light, both of their lives would have been saved. So I just ask you guys, who does it have, who has to be killed for you guys to truly and actually think and wanna put a change into it? Because these two, these two lives were changed that day. All of our lives have been changed. We have family here. We have friends that have been impacted because of this. So think about that. Who does have to affect? Thank you.
Remy, followed by Jim Grivage, followed by Steve Bennett.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on a few different things, but it all comes down to accountability. I have a job I wake up and go to every morning, and if I don't do my job, I'll be held accountable and be laid off. I've been attending meetings for more than a year now, and when I can't make them, I watch them the following day. This morning, a coworker asked me why I come to these meetings or why I even care. If everyone thought like him, you guys wouldn't be up there. I've watched all of you sit up there, roll your eyes, shake your heads, and tune us out. For a group who's supposed to represent our city and be our better halves, you guys sit up here and disrespect your residents. Wing Wing Zhang, our library manager, comes in here almost every meeting for the past year to apologize for the library still not being open. She's not a project manager, she's not the general contractor on the job. Can't one of you take the time out of your busy schedule to call her boss and find out what the issue is? You guys talk about being in the trenches, being boots on the ground, but Mrs. Viado, getting up here and telling Wing Wing Zhang that residents are tired of hearing her say sorry is a complete low blow. You guys have been asking her why, why, why for a year. Why don't you guys take accountability and walk the three minutes down to the library to speak to whoever you may need to? That's boots on the ground. She comes out here on her free time, just like the rest of us, and instead of having a little respect and trying to look like you're listening, you guys stare down your noses at us. I made the joke to my wife that I should tell our sons to go into public office. They can lie, cheat, steal, and not be held accountable. Shouldn't the five of you be trying to make each other better and hold each other accountable? Instead of making the city a better place and working on it together, which you were elected to do, you tune us out and just worry about getting into the next office or higher position where you'll be held even less accountable? I've heard the owners of Bun Street come up here very respectfully and ask for your guys' help on different matters, on different occasions. Well, I think their best bet is probably to relocate. With all due respect to them and establishments like Sushi Damu, they're doing their best to bring you guys revenue to the city, and you guys do nothing to help them. I'll gladly take my family to downtown Covina, Azusa, or Glendora before I drive five minutes to our downtown area. I've lived in this city my whole life, and that area, downtown West Covina, is like baby Skid Row. With all due respect to the owners of Bun Street, to choose to have their location there, that area didn't just become like that. It's not a news flash, but you guys see you're the third safest city and hang your hat on that. That's not good enough, and I don't think I'm the only resident in the city that doesn't believe that. I can't tell you how many times I see West Covina police on break at Carl's Jr. in the Eastland, or the parking lot right by Michael's, or in the parking lot at Cortez Park, but I never see them stopped at the Dollar Tree here next to McDonald's. I never see them at the shopping center across the street from Stater Brothers on Azusa. I never see them here on Skid Row behind the movies. I have a cousin who lives off of North Garvey and Tolan Avenue. Cars have been getting broken into there on that block for 15 years plus. Why can't we send a cruiser there through every now and then? Put a cop outside of one of our big stores, something. Show the people you're making an effort to keep us safe. Again, no one is being held accountable, though. Over Thanksgiving break, you guys parked an empty police car outside of Target in the Eastland Shopping Center. But do I have to come here and tell you guys unless there's an officer inside? No one cares. I don't know how police assignments work. I'm not pretending to be a cop, but it's frustrating that they would pull any of us over in a heartbeat, over window tint, tags being a month late, but you have drug addicts driving around illegally modified RVs and cars throughout the city. I've never seen them pulled over, not to mention you have people walking out.
Thank you.
Jim Grivage, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by Martha.
I'm here to speak about the council compensation. Previously, I spoke twice about the city taking actions that were illegal, and in both cases, I was gratified that the city council withdrew those actions. I'm once again today asking you to not proceed with the proposed increase in city council compensation. My reasons are legal. The proposed raise for the city council exceeds the legal limit established by government codes 36516 and 36516.5. The detailed interpretation by the California Attorney General, which you have now in front of you, is pages five and six concludes, based on several court cases, that a retroactive 5% raise cannot be compounded. The word compounded is important. Simply speaking, you cannot take 5% for the first year and then add to it another 5% for the second year and another 5%. That's called compounding. The arithmetic over 13-year period, a 23-year period that you're talking about here, results in a significant difference. The correct computation is you take 5% and multiply it by the number of years, which is 23. In that case, you're entitled to 115% raise instead of 265% raise. Huge difference. The correct rate of pay that you should be getting legally is $1,645 per month. I'm asking you to amend the proposed ordinance that you're being asked to look at tonight to change the compensation of the city council to $1,645 a month. Not only is it legal, it's much more reasonable. You've heard speaker after speaker tonight talk about the priorities of the city are all wrong. They should be worried about safety, they want more police, they do not want code enforcement, they want the streets to be safer, and I'll just add one more street, Roland and Lark Ellen. I've seen many accidents there, and I, and nothing's been done about it. It's not a safe intersection. The priorities have to be in the right place. A huge council increase is not the priority.
Steve Bennett, followed by Martha, followed by Black Widow.
Good evening, council. First off, I wanna say congratulations to Centennial Mayor Tabatabai. Thank you for rotating up to mayor. I know this is a tough meeting tonight, so I'm gonna get into my comments about street sweeping real quick. You heard from a gentleman a little while ago, I believe his name was William William, and he talked about Centos down on the south side of West Covina being a problem. He's probably not wrong. There's probably about 90% of our streets in the city that don't have his problem. So there don't, there is no need to make a citywide 100% solution for the city. For William William, he can go to the city and ask them for $50 to run a survey of his neighbors to which they can vote and have street sweeping, no parking, put on that street. That would solve his problem in his neighborhood without affecting 100% of the rest of the residents in this city. We do not need to do a citywide issue with no parking on street sweeping nights. We are 100% compliant in street sweeping. We are 100% compliant, I say again, which means there is no need to even bring this up because we are compliant. There are places in the city that need help, and in this gentleman's case, I believe that we need to handle that. But the rest of us residents do not want no parking for street sweeping days in front of our neighborhood because we don't have that problem. Fix the problem where it is. That is a simple thing. I passed out to you something very interesting. You have a paper in front of you, it's from a public records request. You guys had a consultant here state at numerous meetings, including here at the council a couple weeks ago, that they are not enforcing street sweeping, no parking restrictions throughout the city on the 7% of the cities. For the years of 2022 and 2023, for not enforcing, they've written 4,600 tickets for no parking and street sweeping. I don't know what his version of not enforcing is, but 4,600 people would probably disagree. So the question is, for your consultant, is he A, lazy, B, incompetent, or C, a liar? Because I've brought it up to him in several meetings that they are enforcing, showed him pictures of tickets, and he still stood before you guys and said they are not enforcing. If he's lying about one or incorrect on one, that's wrong. I'm gonna comment about council compensation. I will state again, if you think you deserve a raise, resign now. Resign now. There are people that do your job for free. Resign now. You've got families here crying, giving and grieving over their lost loved ones, and you're concerned about pay? You haven't done anything. Resign. Let them get something out on the streets. Raising your pay 260-some percent to over $500,000 over a four-year term for all five of you would pay for lighting or stop signs. Don't humor them, don't patronize them. Do your job and stop worrying about your pay.
Martha, followed by Black Widow, followed by Spellman. Martha, followed by Black Widow, followed by Spellman.
I just stopped in, so I really don't have a written statement about anything. But I do appreciate that we have an opportunity to share our concerns, but at the same time, I hope that it's not just the due process. In my job, there are a lot of things that are just due process, as I'm sure for a lot of other people, and we do that just to do our job, but we're all people, and it's really critical to remember that. And my condolences to, to these precious families. I just, I don't know the details, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like this had been addressed before, and it just, mind-boggling that nothing had been done, but I don't know all the details. I want to address just how West Covina, I see that there is 100th anniversary right here, the really nice banner, but what are we celebrating? What are we celebrating? We're supposed to be celebrating, I think, a community, and the community is people. It's people. So I hope you keep that in mind. West Covina has declined a lot. I don't know, do you all live in West Covina? Okay? We know that there are more affluent areas in West Covina than others, but we all wanna feel safe, and that's another thing, yes, the code enforcement. I know that the intention can be good to, so that the city looks nice and livable and pleasant for all people, for all residents, but at the same time, it feels like a lot of harassment, and I think that needs to be kept in mind. Do you wanna engage your people, or do you wanna distance them and have them feel uncomfortable in their own community where we live? Okay? I think we do need more officers so that we can feel safe. I'm, a gentleman commented about the parking or the, maybe that officers go to some areas, I don't know, but I just know that I feel very unsafe going to a lot of, just to the supermarket, even in the daytime. One thing I do wanna address also, it's, I know that some of the areas, oh, sorry, next time.
Black Widow, followed by Spellman.
Hi. I don't even know the proper way to address you. I had no intention of speaking tonight. We're here, and I can see that there's a lot of tension and there's a lot of emotion. What's before you guys and what I have gotten to learn specifically about the city of West Covina is that contrary to popular belief, you are genuine individuals. I've had the pleasure of getting to know a few of you and do community events with you. you. What we are asking is that you become the first city that brings awareness to motorcycle fatalities. I know there's a lot of bureaucracy behind you. I know you have to go through channels and protocols. Everybody's addressing the grant you were given. You are one of the few cities that was given money for streetlights. I don't know what the statistics are, but we are requesting that you consider using this specific situation with a double fatality in 24 or 27 hours to be the first city to allow us to promote it within the motorcycle-riding community. Maybe even a plaque could be put up in honor and recognizing the people that lost their lives in order to effectuate a change. I see family members here. I see a lot of anger and frustration, but I also see a possibility for change. That's why I wanted to be here tonight. I had no idea I'd be up here addressing you. But I'm asking that West Covina consider being the first city to actually recognize how crucial the roads are. A small change like a streetlight makes a huge difference and can save someone's life. So we're willing to team up with West Covina and bring out West Covina, as we've done in many other different ways, where you are welcoming opportunities to continue to work with different people and to recognize that, one, motorcycle riders are welcome in your city, and, two, that they can ride safely. Thank you.
I believe the name is Spellman. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Spellman, Spellman, thank you.
Hi there. I'm wondering if you're aware that someone's son laid on the pavement for 10 hours today at Vincent and Puente until the coroner got there. 10 hours. I knew that he was dead before his mother did. I'm begging you for a left-turn arrow at Vincent and Puente. I've lived there for many decades, and there have been so many accidents and now so many fatalities. I called the traffic department this summer after there was a fatality on Puente, three houses in. And I said, you put one at Bedilla, you put one at Sunset, you put one at whatever the next one was. Why didn't you put one at Vincent and Puente? Where there are so many bad accidents, I can tell you because I hear them. I've heard them for decades. And he said, well, you know, we put those yellow things around the lights so that people would notice them more. And unfortunately today, that young man who laid on the pavement until 20 minutes before I got here didn't see that yellow thing around the light. So I'm begging you to put a left-turn light there. Thank you.
No further speaker cards, mayor.
Okay. Acting City Manager, may you please respond to public comment concerns?
Well, I think a lot of the concerns tonight involve the incidences around these two intersections. So in regards to the souls we lost at AMAR and Westport over the Thanksgiving holiday, Ms. Censaris and Mrs. Fuentes, I truly am so sorry for your loss of your sons, Robert and Adrian. I wanted to extend the city's heartfelt sympathy to you and the loved ones of Mallory Santos. And as mentioned, we also lost another individual today at Puente and Vincent. And want to extend to that individual's family and friends our deepest condolences. Sorry. I had a family member pass away from a motorcycle accident, too. Didn't beat a cry, but, so I unfortunately understand some of the pain that you're feeling. And I, I know there's no words that you can say to take that hurt away, but you are in our hearts, and we will do what we can to correct those issues at those intersections. I wanted to show the loved ones of those four individuals that are community, in our community, that the city values the lives of our community members and are addressing the two intersections right away. While we can't undo what happened, we will work towards correcting those intersections, those issues at those intersections. Some of the city council members, along with some of our staff, have already gone to the intersections. We've already had our traffic engineer go out, and they're starting to do an assessment of those two intersections. It is a priority for them. I did want to mention that the AMAR and Westport intersection, the city did apply for a grant to include left-turn phasing. Unfortunately, we did not get that grant approved, but we will look at other options for immediate traffic calming measures to help address it in the immediate future. And we'll also work with our legislators to see if we can get that grant funding for that intersection to get that left-turn phasing. So I know that our police department as well also deployed additional police officers to that section of AMAR since the incident to try to help reduce the traffic incidences and try to reduce the speeding in that area. We'll also look at installing signage to help reduce speeds along AMAR. In regards to today's incident on Puente and Vincent, this is fortunately part of what is called the grant, which is from the Highway Safety and Improvement Program. So we did get that grant approved. It's currently in the design phase, so there's going to be left-turn phasing for that intersection. It is, I said, in the design phase. We're working with our adjacent city of Covina to, there's one intersection that involves both cities. Once that's completed, we'll be able to go out to bid for a contractor, and we're hoping that that intersection improvements will be done by 2024. And we will be prioritizing that intersection as far as when that contract gets started. So that'll be by 2024. I know that this doesn't change, like I said, what happened, but we are trying to address it as quickly as we can so that we protect the lives of our residents and other people in our community. So all I would ask is that this holiday season, we ask everyone to drive safely, not just for the sake of your life, but for those on the road as well. So I'll leave it with that.
Thank you. For those of you on YouTube who may not have heard, just please respect the roads, respect the motorcyclists who also share the roads with us in cars. And I think it's very important as drivers of automobiles that we are attentive of the road because, as we've seen, the tragedies, especially for those on motorcycles, yeah, you can't bring the life back. And so whatever's on that cell phone or whatever's distracting, it is not worth the life. And so thank you for that. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Potem Wu, who had some words as well. Thank you.
First thing, I want to show my deepest condolences to the parent, okay? I understand this is a tremendous loss to you guys, and I have children, too. And during this holiday season, you have this loss. This is horrendous, okay? And I really just want to share with you, I understand how painful it is to you guys and for all the parents, okay? And when the thing happened, and we got the text from the police and the firefighters, okay, and the chief, we right away and talk about how can we improve this area? I just want to let you know, okay? We're not, okay, like cold-hearted, we don't care. You are our resident, you are our neighbors. We're here, we basically want to do something good. Otherwise, we don't want to sit over here. Just want to share with you. And, okay, the acting chief, we talk about how to put a flashing yellow light. And I went there at the weekend, and I talked to some residents, and I saw that both sides are complex. So we really need to improve that intersection, not only for the left turn, also the crosswalk because the people walking and that you see, okay, people downhill from the AMAR, and it's a turn, and it's kind of, you cannot see nothing. And when people make a left turn, going home, especially for gas price, people want to ride a bike to save, okay, the funding, okay? I understand 100%, okay? I have a kid, too, and he wanted to ride a bike. And I was a biker when I was young. I know how they, okay, easy to get around and plus, okay, how we can help the family. So, but how can we improve our city, okay? And we need to really, I want to take our Black Widow's suggestion. I think that we need to maybe put these three young people, okay, a plaque in that intersection, okay? I think that is how we, at least minimal, we can do, okay? Showing we all together as a family, your pain is our city council as your neighbor, okay? I just want to let you know. I think this is a very good suggestion, and we were studying a promotion of how we can help the people watch out, okay? People riding the bike, people riding the motorcycle, people walk on the street, and one death is too many, okay? And especially for all these young children, they have a bright future, okay? We all want them to see their bright future. They get cut such a short time. So hopefully, we can work together, do something, okay? And I think, again, again, okay, let's set this up, okay? And I think now of our city council will disagree to put some kind of plaque over there to warn people, okay? And we can work together, how can the design, okay? And to respect the people riding the motorcycle. I on the freeway, I see all the motorcycle, okay? And we want to make sure they safe, okay? So something very important to us. And regarding the Puente and Vincent, I think that is need to be addressed, too. And we have to see, have our engineer, traffic engineer, Transtag, he's right here, Armon, okay? I think you listen to all this, you understand, okay? You need to be responsible, have your traffic engineer, okay, to look into all of the intersection, the flashing stop sign or any traffic signal, left turn. We need to improve, okay? And our acting police chief, we maybe need to, okay, traffic enforcement to make sure slow down the car and make sure they don't speed and make sure that we won't have an accident happen like this, okay? Again, again, my tremendous condolences, okay? Deepest condolences to all family. And you can call me anytime, okay? Provide a cell phone from our city manager. If you need me anything, please let me know, okay? And it's from my sincerity, I really, okay, want me to go to your home, I will be there, okay? I'm so sorry, so sorry about this loss, okay? And we can maybe work together to study awareness about motorcycle and make sure this intersection can be covered, to make sure everybody's safe. But thank you so much you come to address us. And again, again, I cannot, okay, say even more about the loss for you guys. I'm so sorry about that, okay? But thank you so much.
Councilman Contos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Words can't express how sorry I am for your loss. Within 24 hours of the Friday accident, I reached out to our city manager to ask what to do. Fellow colleagues did the same. And just to build on what Mayor Potem Wu has said, we're fellow residents up here. We don't just sit on some high horse somewhere. Various of us, including Councilwoman Rosaria Diaz and I, we literally travel the streets bond patrol every week because we care about our residents. And I really want you to please hear us when we tell you this, that we really care. And I'm sorry. But the thing is, you know, we just want you, we want to do what we can to be of support. There are other issues that are coming. Let's say, you know, with other intersections like Citrus and Cameron, I mean, yeah, Citrus and Cameron, other places, we have to address these issues. So we're really appreciative to you for this, but one life that's a loss is one life too many. And so we can't, we can't take that pain away from you with losing your loved ones. But what we can do is, we can build on the memory, and I want actively to join, and I want to meet with all of you and to see what we can do proactively so this doesn't happen to any other family. No one deserves to go through this. None of you deserve to go through any of this. It's just not right. So I want to join with my colleagues and with our community to do everything we can to support you, not through some speeches, but through actual action. I love the idea of what Black Widow had suggested. We need to stop motorcycle deaths. We need to really get at these issues. And I think it was Mr. Vargas, I didn't get his first name, but him and others, if there are issues around, call us. Call us, and I mean, literally, get in touch with us. We actively work with our staff and with law enforcement to get these various issues addressed. There's a whole system where we report back. We don't just say, oh, thank you, and that's it. We tell you how things go. So please, we're really, really eager to engage with you. We're so sorry, and I'm so sorry for your loss, for all of you. And I promise you that I will do whatever I can from within where I sit and as, joining my colleagues to be of support to you so that this doesn't happen to anybody else.
Councilwoman Diaz.
I'm not going to say a speech here, but I just want to express my deepest condolences to the families that lost their loved ones. I just want you to know that I'm not, we are not up here to dictate, to earn more money or steal your money. We really, truly care about our residents. And we are constantly talking to our residents and engaging with them. And I just, if you ever have any issues, you can email me, and I respond, or I visit, I call. I mean, I'm there for the residents, and if you don't believe it, try me. I'm here for you. I don't, and as far as your children, I can't imagine losing a child. I, I am so sorry. I'm really, truly sorry for your loss. I can't imagine that. And if we can do anything to help, just email us or call me. I also want to say that coming to this meeting, I saw a pedestrian almost get hit. We have too many people driving and not paying attention. Too many. Speeding, running red lights, running stop signs. What is going on? We really need some enforcement out there, and that's something that we continue to work on. That's all of us. We are always trying to hire more, to get more enforcement out there, and we really need some motorcycle cops out there to enforce these speeding issues that we have. So I just want you to, I just want to let you know, we're here for you regardless of what people say. We are here for you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
I, sorry, I'm speechless. Tough year because I had to consult families who, I mean, obviously those who knew. At work, I had teenagers who were murdered at my work, and so just death this year has just been a tough year. And then just a few weeks ago, I know my son's girlfriend, after dinner, meeting her for the first time, she just had that accident, which was shown on, you know, by that drunk driver, still drinking. So, I mean, we've seen it, but I just want to say, we're here to support you. Our biggest condolences to the family. I know it's tough. I know how it was. Sorry. Sorry. But it is to lose somebody. I have family members who I've lost, so. But whatever you need, we're here for you. We really are. I know sometimes, I know you, people say these things and not true. Obviously, we can't speak, you know, to comment back. But we are boots on the field. Police, you know, I mean, people who know me, I have four police officers. We've, we've extended that, we've, we're hiring. I mean, for those out there, come and apply. It's not that we don't want it, it's there. It's just being a police officer is also a tough job. Nobody wants to be an officer anymore. But we're here with whatever we can provide and give. If you need us, more than welcome to, you know, contact us. I'd be more than happy, like all of us, the whole council is here to provide that. I do thank Black Widow. I greatly appreciate what you said. We're here to work together, whatever ways we can. We're here to support. So we do look forward to that partnership moving forward. It is a tough year. It's been a tough year for me. It's been a tough year, generally for many families, for many, you know, many reasons. But I just want you all to know that we are really here for you. This is what we do. I mean, there's a lot of things. I know we just had a, you know, big event for the community, not just for West Covina, for everybody outside. Just, just many things. But if you need anything, by all means, reach out to all of us, email all of us. I greatly appreciate everybody here today who spoke. I know lots of emotions are happening. But on my stance and everybody's stance is, how can we fix it? Let's fix it. A lot of things are happening, but just want to say we're here for you. And if there's anything, by all means, let us know. It's just, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think I want to reiterate not only what the council said, but what the public said, what our acting city manager said. We, we don't want any of this to happen. And we want to make sure that we put in place the solution so that these things don't happen. I think that the worst part is, is these are the tragedies that, that make things change. And it's too bad that we're not often proactive. And I know, I see Chris Miller, we've, we've been talking for years about Vincent and Puente. And I know Ray gave me a little piece. But we've talked about it. We, we've talked about different things to do, different, you know, we've had Jana, traffic engineer, and it's, it's been a constant battle to, 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 to change things. And, and so, you know, all of us here, all of us here tonight, everyone who's watching, we, we want our community to be safe. We, we want all our families to be able to come home. And so from, from all of us and all of our families, our hearts are, are with all of you. And what we can do to make the city safer and more secure and to make sure that everyone is, can feel safe, can, can go to the market, go to the park, drive home at night and get home and be with their loved ones, that's, that's what we're going to do. And I, I wish we could say this is never going to happen again. But we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can do to, to prevent, whatever we can prevent. And like my council colleague said, this is your space. This is your place to come and speak, to come and share the things that you see, the things that need to be changed. Our role is, is to listen, to take, you know, whatever it is that you need to say. Say it. And we're here to, to listen and then act. And so, again, I'm, I'm sure that we're going to take action and we're going to make these changes and we're going to prioritize these changes. And so as we, as we go forward, hold this to account, continue to hold this to account. And, and this won't be the, the last time we talk about this. Okay? So, thank you for all comments. I'd like to ask my, my colleagues, are, are we okay to continue? Would we like a break? We're okay to continue? Yeah? Okay? Okay. So we, we are going to, to move on with our meeting. So, yeah, so we'll move on to our city manager's report. So now for our city manager's report, which will be given by our acting city man. And you know, actually, let me, let me take a two minute, we're going to take a two minute break, two minute break. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are going to resume our meeting now. Acting city manager, we are now ready for your report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight's report, I wanted to introduce our new deputy director for our public works department, Jerry Lopez. He's up there, so he joined us November 27th. And now he's on our team for our public services department. So if you'd like to come down and say a couple of things, Jerry?
Yeah, let's come down, let's, let's meet you in person at last.
Oh, you wear suit.
On our mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name's Jerry Lopez. I'm a resident of nearby Volinda. I'm a block from West Covina, so I, I kind of claim West Covina as my residence.
We count you, we count you.
Thank you for, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to join a great city, West Covina. Thank you to the staff, we've been great. Look forward to working with staff and working with, with the council in the future, making the city a better place to live and shop and play and do everything here in West Covina. So thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Welcome to West Covina, and you know, we need a lot of help. Clean up the city.
I, I heard some stuff, yes. But we're, we're good, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be all right.
Maintain the service, okay, history and all those things, and monitor the contract and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And you are accountable, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Wu, for getting him started on the right foot.
My chance.
Okay, please, please continue.
Thank you. We had our senior center Thanksgiving. So we, the senior center held its annual Thanksgiving celebration, hosting over 200 of our seniors on Wednesday, November 22nd, 2023. There was food, dancing, and pies were made available to the seniors. The LA County also donated $300 for the meals and FNS Food Services in San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball for donating the pie. So we had a very nice event. Then this last Friday, we had our annual tree lighting and let it snow event. The event included performances by our local high schools, including the West Covina High School Jazz Band, Vinila and Montreal School Holiday Choir, and Holland Crest Middle School Band, and the Holiday Bellas Acapella Group. There was, as you can see, snow, vendors, food and arts, and crafts were provided to the community. So it was a very great event with a lot of our community members and our students from our local schools. And if we go to the next slide, there's a little bit of video. We also had our first annual West Covina Centennial Toy Giveaway. The City of West Covina, Film at West Covina and Humilde House of Charities hosted the biggest toy giveaway or centennial toy giveaway in the San Gabriel Valley. The drive-through began at 10:00 AM and went until 2:00 PM when we gave away all the toys. It was $120,000 worth of Mattel toys were provided to children. A big special thank you to Councilwoman Latif Lopez Viado and Planning Commission Chair Brian Gutierrez for their efforts in bringing this centennial toy giveaway to our community. And if we go to the next slide, there's another video. And we do have the Children's Christmas Parade in Santa's Village this Saturday, December 9th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the historic downtown West Covina. So we encourage everyone to attend. There is a walking parade for those that want to participate. You can go on the website, the city's website for more information. Just a reminder that the city hall will be closed December 25th and will reopen January 2nd. Wishing everyone happy holidays. And that's it for my city manager's report today.
Thank you. We will now move on to our consent calendar. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items number one through five?
So move.
Mayor, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wu, a second by Councilwoman Diaz, to approve consent calendar items one through five. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Items pass 5-0, mayor.
Great. We will now move on to public hearing item number six, consideration of adoption of new and revised fees and charges for services provided by the city. This matter set for public hearing consists of consideration of adoption of new and revised fees and charges for services provided by the city. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper notice has been given, mayor.
All right. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the consideration of adoption of new and revised fees and charges for services provided by the city. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor, then those opposed. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Our finance director, Stephanie Sikama, will provide the report.
Good evening, mayor and council. The last comprehensive citywide fee update was done in December 2017. Since then, the city was audited by the state in 2020, and they recommended that the city adjust its fees in order to align with the full cost of those services, resulting in what would be less reliance in the general fund revenue to subsidize those services. The study the city initiated kicked off in January 2022, which was followed by a series of focused meetings going into the details for every user fee. The final report of this was initially presented to city council on August 15th. This was followed by community workshops held in August and September. The comprehensive update includes the recommendations from the cost of services study that was completed in 2023 and includes fees that combines all fees into one schedule. Community service fees, for example, were not previously posted in our fee schedule, but are presented within as they are existing currently and included in the fee schedule. I will say that the cost of services study did indicate that community service fees are bringing, recovering about 52.6% of their direct cost. So it is a subsidized service. We've also included building fees, business license fees, and development impact fees as they are currently. With one comprehensive schedule, all fees will be presented in one place, and we've also aligned their annual increase to January, which will make it easier for anyone looking for fees within the city. The possible new revenue based on the cost of services study is about 1.3 million to the city. It's recommended that council continue with the public hearing and adopt a resolution to adopt the revised charges for services. And I would like to note that we have Rick Kermer here from revenue and cost specialist to answer any questions regarding the cost of services study itself, but I can answer any questions regarding the fee schedule as presented.
Okay, do any council members have any questions? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
I have nobody wishing to speak in favor.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition?
I have two mayor. First one is Bill Robinson.
I want to respond to what was just said. The topic of this hearing is charges for services provided by the city of West Covina. That includes code enforcement services and, and, and street sweeping services and police department services. What was just said was 1.4 million dollars of new revenue is what was just discussed. Well, you guys are headed in the opposite direction of, you, you said 30 minutes ago that you all want to be responsive to public safety in this city. Couple meetings ago, I mentioned a liquor store employee that was murdered by shoplifters about a mile from where I live. Furthermore, I mentioned food for less. Somebody walked in and grabbed a handful of merchandise and out of food for less and left. That's a crime that's not going to be prosecuted. And if crimes like that are allowed to happen in this city, businesses are going to go out of business. We're not going to have markets to go to. So what you need to do is, is, is support our police department.
Mr. Robinson?
More people.
Mr. Robinson, it's a public hearing, you have to stick to the, the topic.
I'm, I'm on the top.
You're, you're, no.
What you need is more police department city services and fewer code enforcement services. You want to shut me down because I'm not saying what you want to hear. You're, you're, you're going in the opposite direction. You're looking for 1.4 million in new revenue. At the same time, you've given yourself a pay raise. And we don't need 4,600 code enforcement violations in this city so you can gather the revenue. What we need is more public safety, which you all, all five of you agreed, but we need more new positions in the police department. I'm sorry, I'm not saying what you want to hear, but you're headed in the opposite direction of where we need to go. So I don't know, I'll yield back my last 30 seconds.
Thank you. For, for those, during the public hearing, you're to speak to the item.
I was doing that.
And, and it's very restrictive. And so it's a learning experience for us all. Next.
Our next speaker is Martha.
Hello again, here I am. I didn't have time to review all of the code. Bless you. Bless you. All of the proposed changes. I was told, though, that the, uh, the proposals would be up on November 30th, which they were not. Checked it several times. I know that you are now up, but I am in opposition because I am planning to, I would like to, Lord willing, improve on where I live. That takes money, obviously, so I'm opposed to the fees. It's increased by over $600, which is a lot. As you know, the cost of living has gone up, inflation has gone up, but not to that extent. And I don't have all the data like this woman had with the recapturing revenue, I believe, that was stated. But I, what I do know is, as a resident, when we want to improve our property, it benefits the entire city, you know, our, our comfort, our pleasure for our families and neighbors. So it makes it harder. And along with that, my understanding and speaking with Joanne, and I don't know if she was the planning of the building department, she said it so that they can review, because I was asking a lot of questions, she was very helpful. But it seems to me that they're getting paid to do what, I'm sorry, the additional charges are to pay what they're already paid to do. For example, in my job, say, say if I'm a cashier, but I have to check a certain aisle, it's something specific, I shouldn't get paid on top of that because that's part of my job. So I don't understand why it's such a huge increase, and I'm opposed to it. It makes it difficult. And if we want to improve our community, we are the community, as I stated earlier. So I, um, I do appreciate the opportunity to say something, and I hope, I know that a lot of times really decisions are already made, and it's just going through the process, like I stated before. So I hope that's not the case. I hope you really hear people and consider if you were in the position yourself. Thank you. Sorry, I don't know if my time's up. When will it be decided? Because I understand it's under review, or is it?
For adoption.
Done, adoption?
For adoption.
Yes. So when would that be? Just, or is it effective come January, and that's it? In other words, are you, is it going to be reviewed and maybe some changes made or not?
So it's before the council for a vote for adoption this evening?
It's for, before council for the first reading. The actual fees would not be effective until February 5th, 2024.
Okay. Okay. So it's just, so really, it's pointless to say anything. I mean, it doesn't really matter. It's going to be voted on.
So this is for public, it's for you to provide comment to council. It's not supposed to be a dialogue with us.
Haven't done this before, so.
It's okay.
We can.
Thank you.
Okay. I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for any city council discussion. Councilman Contos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Director, can you, just for the benefit of the public, can you also describe how there was an extensive process to also look at where to lower fees? And can you also describe how, what the process is for determining the, the fee increases to the extent that those were applicable and the general category so that people can understand that, that there was an extensive tedious process that, to look at every line item? If you could just, just so people could understand, because in case they may not be aware of the, the process of how that, how this was all developed?
Yes. So each fee was looked at, and the hours allocated per service were evaluated and gone through an in-depth review by the department and the consultant that we hired. They allocated all the staff time, figured out what that cost, and estimated what the city should charge. In some instances, the fees actually went down, but the net is a net positive for the city that they are recommending and changes of all the fees. But it's to reflect, to recoup what the city is actually spending per each of these. And so it started with identifying the cost of our staff time, and then the time that we take on each of these items and allocating that, and also including our overhead. So the buildings you see here and everything to keep the lights on is also taken into account with those fees for the services that the city is providing. And the city, as I stated, we had three initial meetings overall, starting with city council at first, when it was presented. It was posted on the city's website right after the council meeting that week, so it's made, made available to the public since August. And then we had two subsequent public meetings in which we had a fairly good attendance and dialogue and explanations by our consultant as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Okay. And continue the question. When is the last time we did the update of the fee study and tried to update for our current fee schedule?
A comprehensive one wasn't done last until 2017.
So 2017, we did one time, okay? Is that the entire, okay, city fee study or just portion? And I remember I was there at that time, but I don't remember is entire city fee or just portion?
It was a comprehensive update, yes.
Yeah, that's why I remember. So, so now it's 2023, so due to the state order that we need to, okay, do it, update to make sure, okay, and the fee, okay, has to be balanced, okay? Have you compare our, some of the fee increase is let justify for our current compared with other city or county and their charge?
I would actually like to let the consultant address that question specifically, if you don't mind, Rick, coming up to the podium in regards to why we did not compare to other cities.
Because any fee schedule increase, anybody will, will have an issue. So we want to make sure we justify and all this fee adjustment that is justified. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Mayor, Council, as a firm, we've really discouraged comparing fees with other cities because it's really impossible to know what that comparison means. If the other city is higher than yours, does that mean that they're doing a better job and they're more thorough in their analysis, and you should actually raise your fees higher? Or if they're lower than you, does that mean they just don't know what they're doing? And therefore, they're giving away their service to the public? So we've had a hard time really with the fee comparison process. The only way that we've effectively done it is to, to look at different types of developments, but that means looking at all the fees for a particular type of development, like a tract home or a strip mall or a commercial building of a particular size. And one of our experiences has been that when you do that kind of comparison, the individual fees in the different cities tend to really vary, but in grand total, they're pretty much all about the same. And we've also heard from quite a few developers who've told us that your fees really aren't their problem, that their problem with the city is how long it takes the city to process their application. And that's why we want to make sure you have enough money to be able to support the staff you need to actually process their applications. That's, may not be answering your question directly, but that's sort of where we're at as a company. Does that help you?
So basically, I understand what you're saying is say, oh, the developer not necessarily to worry about the fee we charge them, it's more worry about the time we spend. So time is money. If we delay and they might miss the boat, and then that investment possibly in question. But my question would be then in that way, how you justify the rate increase or decrease and based on what method, okay? If you don't do the comparison, so you're doing the, by how many people, how fast? So in that way, we can tell people the, the increase or decrease is justification. So can you answer that, please?
Well, it, what I want you to take away from that report is the fact that these are what your costs actually are.
Oh, okay.
Spending this money now, the only question is who's paying for it? In some cases, it's the applicant, in other cases, the city is paying for it, the city residents are paying for it. You know, I, I have a favorite exercise. I, I call it the straight face approach. Can you go to your neighbor and say, do you mind my using your money to support this developer building this project in town? And if you can say that with a straight face, there's probably a good reason why you're doing it. But if you can't, then really, we need to make sure that the developer is paying his fair share.
Understood, okay? And then so basically, you base on the cost analysis about how much it will cost, okay, to do the project, and will cost city how much with the manpower? So in that way, you base on that to justify the fee increase or decrease.
Absolutely. This is a, a well-thought-out process that actually I was in the ground floor of doing back in 1980. I was a co-author with the gentleman who's now the department head of USC's Accounting Department, and the two of us put together a publication for the League of California Cities called Cost Accounting for California Cities. And it, it basically is repackaging what the private sector does on cost accounting for local government. It's just that local government doesn't really have any cost accountants. The private sector has a lot of them. And I'm not suggesting you hire cost accountants, but periodically, it's a good idea to rephrase your, your accounting so that you can see whether you're making money or losing money.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Sure. Any, any other comments? Okay. So is there a, a motion in order to adopt the resolution 2023-92 establishing and adopting new and revised, sorry, flip the page, fees and charges for services provided by the city of West Covina?
I move the motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who, uh, the second? Councilman Contos. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu and a second by Councilman Contos. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Great. We will now move on to item number seven, consideration of council and commissioner compensation and benefits. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Our Finance Director Stephanie will be providing that presentation as well.
Okay, thank you.
So back in December of 2022, the mayor had requested a feasibility, the feasibility of increasing council and commissioner pay. Then again, in September 2023, staff had provided some information to council, and council directed staff to increase council compensation to the max and provide benefits and car allowance, increase council reimbursement allowances to 5,000, and then increase commissioner compensation to 100 per meeting and for planning, 75 a meeting for HR and community service, senior services. And then they also asked that we analyze what it would take to increase audit committee compensation or basically provide audit committee compensation. So the proposed resolutions before you, I'll start with council compensation benefits. With that, the staff has proposed to increase to the maximum of 2,027 per month or 24,327,000 per year. I'd like to clarify that this is 165% increase, which is five times 33 years, which is the number of years since the last increase. So it is not a compounded amount, it is the straight formula as allowed per the statute. Council benefits have also been increased to that of those of the department heads. Both of these are not proposed to take effect until after the election in November 2024. For city commissioner stipends, the planning commission has been proposed to increase from 75 to $100 a meeting. And then for community and senior services commissioners and research commissioners, we're proposing to increase from 50 to 75 as directed. As far as the audit committee is concerned, the Audit Committee Rules and Regulations that were established by resolution specify that members of the audit committee shall serve without compensation. So if council wishes to proceed in changing that, that resolution would need to be amended, and then staff would also needed to prepare a separate resolution to establish a stipend. A stipend of 75 per meeting, which is consistent with the other commissions, would be an estimated fiscal impact around 1,500 a year. The estimated fiscal impact of all of the proposed changes in the staff report range from about 190,000 to 263,000 dollars a year. Again, the council, the council compensation and benefits would not go into effect until after the next election. The commissioner stipends would go effect immediately. Of course, the recommendation from staff is that council do the first reading of the ordinance relating to council compensation and then adopt the following resolution for the schedule of benefits, and then the commissioner stipends. One thing I would also like to note is that Senate Bill 329 was, is effective January 2024 and adjusts the maximum salaries for inflation since 1984. This allows for that 5% salary increase that we're going to towards the max. In the bill, it also stated that city councils is one of the hardest jobs in the, in California government. Low levels make it harder for council members to balance careers. Raising pay will make it easier for members of marginalized communities to serve, and is important to achieving city council goals that are reflective of their community. The last adjustment of the city's, uh, city council had not been made until 1990. And then some other cities that are currently considering council compensation are Palo Alto and Concord. With that, I'll take any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Just want to question about, and at overall communication, some residents say it's a compound is illegal or this and that. Can you elaborate? Is that true? Okay?
Yeah, that is true. You cannot compound it. This is not compounded in the equation. In the paper he's handed out, the email, it has, it has 23 years. Staff report says 33 years, so it's a miscalculation. That's it.
So this is not a compound?
It's not.
Okay. So basically, just since 1990, this never been adjusted, and then now, and plus, this is not adjusted for our current city council, it's for the November, the people get elected, and they will be, have a this.
That's correct. You cannot take this until election, the next election. So that would be 20.
So, so basically, we, this issue is we want to encourage people to run. So basically, we, this issue is we want to encourage people to run. Because like last time, I stated, okay, and if we are doing what we are doing right now, only people with money or people retire, okay, and they, they run. And how about all those fixed income? And it would be very difficult for them. We're not going to sit here forever and speaking to $2,000, nothing. But for some people, if they're willing to run, okay, there's something maybe they can consider, they're not going to impact about their financial利益 for all this of, okay, sacrifice with the time, this and that. So hopefully, we can encourage more people, okay, not discourage people to run. Okay, and, and another thing I mentioned last time, you can give up, okay, the stipend or you can give up, okay, the allowance. And I remember in 2015, when I get elected, the first thing I did, okay, with Lloyd Johnson, we gave up all the health, okay, the benefit and we give up, okay, the, okay, car allowance. The only thing we kept is the $700 stipend. Okay, so, and when I said, mentioned last time, the $5,000, it's not going to your pocket, it's the allowance if you go to travel to Sacramento or to DC. But again, okay, that is subject to, you want to claim for reimbursement. So you can give up too. I went to Japan with Mayor Tomas and Corey Walsh out, the council members, three of us went to Japan and we, we using our credit card. I never reimbursed from the hotel and airline airplane. Okay, so it would be subject to the person, they want to claim for this or not. But for some people, that is needed, then we don't restrict them, okay, and, okay, and to confine them in our local. I think this thing is, for example, if we can have our very outspoken, okay, and Councilman Kento to Washington DC or even Sacramento, okay, I think he can bring in the fund we need and we don't have a lobbyist. And I think you are well-connected, but right now, we, we confine you with $1,000. And I think that is, we see all the city councilmen, all the, all the places and bring the result back to us. And I just mentioned to our senator, okay, why we haven't got any grant. Okay, and hopefully, okay, our Councilman Kento or our mayor, Tabatabai, with all their connection can go to the DC or Sacramento to, to bring us revenue and that couple, one, $2,000 paid for your airline ticket is well worth it, 100%, okay, 10 times worth it. So we're not, not going to be, okay, and short sighted, okay, just saving one dime, but missing a million dollars that we can bring to the city. So I strongly support this. Okay, again, again, okay, it's up to you want to give it up or not, okay? If the people want to surrender, like previous president, $1, okay, they, any people can do that. It's subject to the campaign promise. But we put over there for the people, if they're willing to, okay, and they're willing to serve, but they don't want to get a financial burden, okay? And I think we encourage people, more people to run. So I, I support this. So I want to, if it's all legal, I want to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we need two motions here. You have an ordinance, so we need one motion of the ordinance and then a second motion for the two resolutions.
Okay, so for the, we have a motion and we have a second.
Yes, for the, I'm going to ask for the, that's for the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and can you clarify the ordinance is for?
The ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina amending section two dash two, three of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to city council compensation.
Okay. Before we do a roll call vote, I did want to give others an opportunity to speak if they wanted to. Okay, so then I'll, I'll go ahead and, and say a few things before we take the vote. You know, I, I think what Mayor Pro Tim Wu said in terms of the allowance is extremely true. Again, the, the $1,000 allowance that currently exists is, is not enough to be able to, to take a trip to Sacramento and to speak and to lobby for, for funds for the city. And the reality is, having now spent some time in Sacramento, there's plenty of opportunities that are missed when we're not in those rooms. And, and again, Washington DC, having been able to spend some time with, with mayors and council people from other cities and understanding that that is, you know, a biannual trip, you know, twice a year, they're going to Washington DC and they are getting in the offices of their congressmembers and they are, are fighting for funds. And, you know, in my three years, I mean, we, we've fought for some funds from our Congresswoman and then got, gotten some money for Azusa Avenue. But it's, it's different doing it on an email versus being, being there and actually being able to make the case. And, and so, again, I think what Mayor Pro Tim Wu said about kind of the, the shortsightedness is, it's a reality. And as far as the, the compensation goes, that's another reality, that there are so many very qualified folks who would make wonderful council members, would make wonderful mayors, who are not able to run. And it's not because they don't want to serve their community. It's not because they don't want to give of their time. It's just financially, it's, it's impossible. And, you know, we, we, we make sacrifices and our families make sacrifices. But it also, again, eliminates quite a few folks that would be great representatives. And so, you know, it's the reason why the law was passed and it's, it's something that I think in any other walk of life, you, you say you want good people, then, then you compensate people fairly. And, and again, you know, we, we want the best representatives. We want young people to be able to run. We want career people to be able to run. We want family people with young children to be able to run. And so let's, let's allow the most amount of people to, to be able to run in these elections so people can have a great choice. And if the barrier is, hey, you know, how am I going to pay for the childcare or how am I going to, you know, sacrifice my hours at work to be able to do this? Well, well, let's remove that. And, and the law allows us to remove that and it's a benefit for the city. So, so I'm in support. I'm a councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I actually concur. Some people don't realize, yeah, that $1,000 goes instant. You know, like I mentioned before, I needed business cards to do my work. And they said, oh, that comes out and with inflation and all that, business cards cost a lot, that's removed from your $1,000. And I needed a city shirt to represent, you know, the city. All that is coming out of our stipend, which by the time you have nothing left. I know there's so many events that they invite us to, and these are not like free events, you know, for coming to an event, okay, the dinner's like $50 per person. You know, $50, it adds up per month or per different events. Your $1,000 goes quick. And a lot of times, we do spend our own money with a lot of the activities, programming. So we actually put in the money that is, like you said, not compensated. You know, and when I hear, oh, people will do it for free, no, they won't. Right now, there's a small stipend and the, and people who would do it for free, the residents, residents probably don't want them in the first place. So, you know, it's, it's, there's a reason why, you know, there's these things that occur and, and with this, even with a small stipend, look at the election, how many people actually run? I know when I, I ran unopposed and I'm willing to, by all means, anybody come, but a lot of people don't want to because, again, as I said when I first ran, because I hesitated the first time running, because it takes time and money. I mean, well, time, yeah, time or money. And especially when you want the people who relate to you, the career families, the, the ones that are in the loop, they won't do it because they don't have much time or they don't have the money. So, and when you spend, when you run an election, you spend a lot of money, you spend a lot of time. And so by allowing this, I mean, hopefully with the next election, we get more qualified people that would come and open opportunities for all, especially it hurts with those who are low-income, struggling families. They, they are intelligent, they know how to do the job, they can do the job, they're qualified, but I don't want that other hindrance to hinder them. So I, I support this all the way. Thank you.
Yeah, so we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Wu and a second by Councilman Cantos.
I'm just going to read the title of the ordinance really quick one more time since we're going to go for roll call. Ordinance number 2518, an ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, amending section two dash two, three of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to city council compensation. Motion by Wu, second by Councilman Cantos. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes five zero, Mayor. We would now need a motion for the resolutions.
I motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Wu. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Items pass five zero, Mayor.
Okay, we will now move on to item number eight, election of city member for San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority Board representing cities without prescriptive pumping rights. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Just wanted to provide a little brief summary. So the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority is the primary source of drinking water for more than 1 million people in Alejandra, Urundela, Puente, Rosemead, Azusa, Botland Park, City of Industry, El Monte, South El Monte, West Covina and other areas of the San Gabriel Valley. It was established by the state legislature and to develop, finance and implement groundwater treatment programs for our San Gabriel basin. And so before you this evening, it's recommendation to select a candidate for the, I think it's 11 votes, sorry, the 11 votes that the city of West Covina has in order to nominate a representative on the board of the water quality, water authority board. And so the two candidates before you are Margaret Clark from City of Rosemead or Valerie Munoz from the city of La Puente. And so the city needs to vote one, for one or the other candidate.
Okay, Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I'd like to nominate Valerie Munoz.
Second.
Second, oh.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lady Lopez Viado, a second by Councilman Cantos to nominate Ms. Munoz to the water board. Or excuse me, the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority Board. Councilman Cantos?
Enthusiastic, aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes five zero.
All right, we will now move on to item number nine, consideration of street sweeping programs options. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
I will be providing a brief presentation since we have gone through this a couple times now. So I don't know if we can get the presentation. If you can bear with us while we get the presentation up. This evening, we also have representatives from TransTech and from Nationwide to answer questions after my very brief presentation. I can get started. So once she gets the presentation up, we will go over the revised routes. One of the big concerns that we've heard over and over in the community meetings and from the city council was that we wanted to address those areas near high-density residential communities so that we gave those individuals an opportunity to do alternate times of day or alternate days instead of having to move their vehicles. And so once that presentation, we will be able to identify. So a lot of the map or the street sweeping stays the same. It's always the day after trash day for those individuals. Oh, okay. Hold on, sorry. Should play some song, otherwise they think, hey, it's frozen. TV's frozen, nobody's speaking, nobody's moving.
Yeah, so we can bring up Ani from Nationwide if you'd like, but we did look at alternative areas on high-density areas, otherwise.
We have a presentation many times, so we don't really need, we just need last time the problem we have. So we want to continue because we don't have our contractor, okay, in the house. So right now, finally, okay, it's so important for you to show up, to show what you can do and clean up the city.
Yeah, so real quick consensus for council to move right ahead? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members, city staff and the residents of the city of West Covina. My name is Ani Samwalian and I am the president of Nationwide Environmental Services, a family and woman-owned business, providing street sweeping services to the city of West Covina. I regret my absence at the November 7th meeting due to food poisoning and I'm grateful for the opportunity to address your concerns tonight. First, we support staff's recommendation for the implementation of a weekly street sweeping program, which we believe will be both effective and efficient for the city. A key aspect of this program includes a new sweeping times from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM and 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. These times are strategically set to allow us to complete the routes in a timely manner, especially during high season when there is more debris and to accommodate any unforeseen issues such as flat tires or other delays. The recommended posting times will ensure minimal disruption while maintaining the effectiveness of our services with the least impact and inconvenience to the residents. Currently, the city of West Covina is our only client city within the county that conducts street sweeping services twice a month. For the health and safety of the community, it's essential to transition to weekly sweeping services. Regular sweeping helps to reduce pollution and maintains ecological balance in the community. Our team at Nationwide, along with TransTech and city staff, have worked diligently to study and survey the city's streets. We have identified areas requiring modifications due to parking issues and have proposed alternate side, alternate day sweeping in several areas. This strategy allows for efficient sweeping while accommodating residents' parking needs. In response to the possibility, as discussed in the last meeting, of posting the entire city for alternate side, alternate day sweeping, our analysis indicates that implementing such a sweeping schedule requires weekly sweeping and would result in an additional 40 to 45% increase. However, we believe that a citywide implementation of this magnitude is not necessary. Typically, alternate side, alternate day sweeping is more common in high-density or heavily populated areas such as City of Cudahay, City of Commerce. Our focused approach has already effectively addressed the areas that most require these measures. Furthermore, should there be a need for modifications in additional areas after implementation, we are fully prepared to work with the city to make those necessary adjustments. The strategy ensures both efficiency and cost-effectiveness for the city while adequately meeting the community's needs. Each city has unique requirements and our approach is tailored to meet the specific needs of the city of West Covina. Also, addressing the concerns raised. Also, addressing the concerns raised about sweeper speed and water usage. All our sweepers are equipped with GPS tracking and data collecting devices that our management closely monitors the drivers' activities. The appearance of speed is often due to the sweeper transitioning to a new location, not actively sweeping. Our drivers maintain a speed between 5 to 8 miles per hour within the manufacturer's recommended speed of 10 miles per hour. The street sweepers utilize water for dust control, but in a much more efficient manner compared to the older model street sweepers. The new street sweepers are certified by South Coast AQMD and are equipped with built-in water tanks that dispense the correct amount of water necessary for effective dust control. I hope I have addressed most of your concerns. Thank you for your time, and my colleague Nishtha and I are both available to answer any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
So, okay, the first question, your company is pure, you're not trash company, you are sweet sweeping only?
Correct. Street sweeping services, family-owned, woman-owned, street sweeping.
So basically, your job, your business is just, okay, sweet sweeping to clean the street?
Yes, I mean, we offer other services like bus stop cleaning, graffiti, but our mother, our base service is street sweeping.
The major why is?
Is street sweeping, correct.
Bus stop cleaning is just a, it's very small.
Correct, correct.
So, so the second question, last time, we have a resident asking about, okay, okay, should be fired to, what, 10 mile? So in that way, is that how, okay, you can clean the street? Or you cannot be too fast, you cannot be too slow, and you need to use the water to really clean it? So why is accountability, if we go to weekly, that you really, okay, can really make sure our streets clean?
Absolutely, absolutely. Weekly services is definitely gonna make a major impact on the city's streets. It's gonna be more effective. You're gonna have less debris, less pollutants, it's environmentally safe, it's also a safety issue. There's a lot of positives of weekly street sweeping, and it's definitely an environmental impact. It's a positive impact for your community.
And then the third question is about the signage, about how many hours, because I see all the city, and I remember when we have weekly, okay, that time, you only have a four-hours window on one side, because you don't want to interrupt people parking, okay, for a whole day. So it's led, there can be a common day, the period of time should be more confined to the couple, four hours in the morning or afternoon, so in that way, people can move the car back.
The hours, and Nishtha could elaborate a little more, but basically, the hours from 7:00 to 12:00, 11:00 to 4:00 will give us enough time to effectively provide the services necessary, and you never know with, you know, heavy season, leaf season, we have more trash, we have more debris, you never know if you have a breakdown, a flat tire. There's a lot of variables, and you need that extra cushion and window to provide the services effectively.
So, and the next question would be how the accountability, our, okay, okay, our contract monitor can make sure you are doing your job? And then the last question would be, what is the consequence? Do we have accountability termination if you don't do your job?
Absolutely. It's like any contract, if there's a default, any contract could be always terminated. But we've never, we've been in business for 55 years, we're family-owned, we've never had a contract terminated. We pride ourselves on our services, and we will do whatever we can. Nishtha and I work 24 hours, we're always available, we're a phone call away. We really care about the communities we serve, so you will, you will continue to receive high-quality services, and you will definitely see a difference with weekly services.
When we, if we go to weekly, if my colleague agree upon, then your new contract will have accountability termination clause if you don't do your job?
I believe every contract has for default, I believe. I mean, I think that would be a legal question, but...
So you will be put on the accountability, so you will make sure our street is clean, because we are going to put a lot of, okay, and our trust in you guy, and the reason we want to do it, okay, because we have a lot of issue, okay, and with debris and the street and land. So I, we've been seeing a lot, and we've been driving around. So hopefully, this thing can be corrected, okay? At the same time, we will make sure the car can move, so you guys can really clean.
Absolutely.
So I think this is a couple of the concern, but I think, okay, to do the weekly sweeping, it should be after the trash collect day.
Correct.
For example, if I, my collection day is Tuesday, so next day, your sweet, your sweet sweeper should come in to sweep the...
This is not going to impact trash collection. What the staff's recommending will not impact.
But I'm talking about the day of the sweet sweeping should be the day after the people bring the trash came back to their home, okay, and on the street. And because you see the debris when trash, okay, collected, they put, and then things dropping on the street.
Sure.
And then now, we go to two, three weeks, okay, and that debris will be there forever, okay? And so, so at the same time, if they have a car parking over there, then that thing, they will never clean, and they accumulate, okay, and like some, our resident talk about, they have to go to collect themselves all the time. So I think that is a couple issue. So your sweet sweeping time will be collaborate with our trash collect day, right? So maybe next day?
Of course.
Okay, and then people can remember when to move their car for a couple hours inconvenient, and then after that, they can, they can park back on their street.
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm done, you have my time.
Can you speak to the five-hour window?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Nishtha, and I represent Nationwide Environmental Services. So the five-hour window was specifically designed to have minimal impact on the residents when it comes to parking restrictions. So what we've done is we've, I surveyed the city myself, I have swept the city myself as well for quite some time. So the way it's designed at the moment, it's from 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon, that's five-hour window, with one hour overlap for the afternoon route, which is from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Now, one benefit in this program, once the signage is up, the posting is up, and the enforcement is following the sweeper, the minute the sweeper goes by and does its work, the residents can park on the street, so they're not fully restricted the full five hours. It's just our window to come in and perform our work, and then they're allowed to park. So we're not blocking them for no parking for full five hours, you know? So it's a very resident-friendly pattern that we have designed. Again, all of that came based on surveys and years of experience serving the city. And as for the high-density areas, I surveyed, I surveyed the city twice and one additional time with TransTech, so in total, three times we surveyed the city, identifying those high-density areas. And for those areas, we came up with alternate side, alternate day sweeping with four-hour window from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, all of those are being conducted day after waste collection, so there's no interference with the services, also allowing the residents the day or the time to move the receptacles from the curb and allow the sweeper to sweep the following day.
I guess one question I would have is, because it's gonna be on a fixed schedule, right? So you'll understand which streets you'll hit between, let's say, 7:00 and 9:00, and which streets you'd hit between 9:00 and 11:00. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering why our no parking isn't set more to something like that, right? Let's, so, so I, the street I live on, let's say, every Monday when it gets swept, because our street sweeping day is Monday, the street sweeper always goes from that 7:00 to 9:00 period. Then why, why isn't it just set 7:00 to 9:00? I know you're saying, I can park afterwards, after the street sweeper goes, but why have a five-hour window when you know mine is that the first part of street sweeping on Monday? And let's say, on the northern side of West Covina would be in that later part, and so you'd have the later street sweeping time, right? Because just as a resident, I would feel uncomfortable knowing I have a street sign that says 7:00, and, you know, having lived in LA, like, you get the ticket. So, you know, so, you know, if it says 7:00 to 12:00 not to park, I understand what you're saying, and really, it would, it would take me to have years of experience to know, okay, the street sweeper has already gone. And, and so I, like I said, I understand what you're saying, but in practicality, I don't think residents are going to park during that time, because they're gonna say during these five hours, it says no parking, and I've been conditioned to not park. So I guess why, why not have the shorter windows, knowing I'm gonna hit here first, I'm gonna hit there later?
Sure, it's all about efficiency and working with the condition around us. For example, we have an area that requires about hour and 40 minutes to complete, and you have a two-hour window, 7:00 to 9:00. And right around 7:45, you had a flat tire. Now, by the time the technician comes out and replaces the tire, it's already 9:30. So you missed the whole area due to a mechanical or any circumstances. Also, we have the leafy season, which we could accumulate or collect half a ton of debris in five-mile radius or in double the amount in less the distance. So it all, it's very seasonal. So given all those factors, two-hour window is basically asking for trouble. That's something, based on my experience, I do not recommend. It's basically setting ourselves up for failure, because given the traffic, given the conditions, it's just not enough time to commit to a route. And you don't want to do multiple two-hour windows, because if you fall behind on one, it just trickles. Now your entire day is affected, multiplied by four sweepers, it could get really out of control. And I like to commit to routes and programs that I can stand behind, as Mr. Wu said, you know, I want to be held accountable. And I cannot sign up for something that I cannot perform within that tight timeline. So therefore, all of the elements in mind, all of our experiences, many years of serving the city, the way it's divided, we felt comfortable and confident that the way it's proposed, it's something that we can deliver with minimum amount of equipment and most efficient and cost-effective way. That's the reason why we have that five-hour window. Two-hour window is just not gonna cut it, it's too risky.
Okay, so then, just, just from my understanding, during a day with perfect conditions, it doesn't take five hours then to complete the whole area?
It takes approximately four hours, probably just under four hours, to complete that entire zone that's posted from 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Okay, so then you give yourself an hour for the flat tire?
For lunch for the operators, because after their morning run, they need to take their lunch break and then start the afternoon. So therefore, there's that one hour overlap between 11:00 AM and 12:00.
Okay, so then, okay, so, well, now you're complicating things for me. So then, when you do get the flat tire, though, then we're still not gonna complete the street, because you're saying it will take four hours in a perfect day, and so, and then, so I was thinking, okay, you gave yourself that extra hour in case of a flat tire, but you're saying actually that extra hour is for lunch. So where is the flat tire time?
Well, the thing is this, we're not having flat tires every day, by all means, you know, but when we do, having multiple sweepers in the city, they can assist each other and complete the route in time. But that one hour is the cushion that we cannot give up, whether it's half of that utilized for lunch, or half of it's some technical issues, or heavy debris, and so on. The way the routes are broken up, for example, are just enough to give us that cushion. Now, there are different options that could be explored, but I do not recommend in this city, instead of doing two, five-hour windows, doing three, four-hour windows, then it just extends on the back end, and then we have the school zones that we have to hit early in the morning. Again, I've done my homework. As an expert, I'm letting you know, the proposed route and the hours, it's gonna benefit the city most versus complicating it and making it more confusing or having multiple time zones. Again, it's just a proposal. I don't make the decision. It was staff's recommendation, and I support it. However, you'll make that decision.
Okay, I'm gonna allow Councilwoman Lopez Viado to ask her questions?
Thank you, and I'm gonna off yours of what you just mentioned, obviously. I work in LA, and we're, most people, most residents are trained to not park at those certain hours. So when you mentioned the lunch break, that kind of bothered me, obviously, because that shouldn't be in a factor, that's like an internal business on how you manage that. And five hours is pretty much a long time. And then I know you mentioned, well, you have other proposals that, I mean, we're here as a council, we'd love to hear those proposals, because from us, it, we want to make sure it benefits us, otherwise it sounds like, okay, this just benefits you. So I, my two questions is, is there a backup truck to use when there's issues like this? So that's one.
Absolutely. We always have backup sweepers, and that's why when you have multiple sweepers in one city, they help each other out to complete the route in time. Again, this is a proposed plan. It's, nothing is final, I'm open to listen and address your questions. We just want to have a clear understanding that we can't be given a very short window of time to complete a task that could jeopardize our performance or not give us enough time to complete the route in time.
No, I understand that, but...
All of that is taken into...
The reason why I asked about that backup truck is because if a flat tire is, needs to be taken care of, I mean, an hour and a half, or that just sounds, or two hours, three hours, whatever it is, I'm assuming, I was hoping to hear, like, maybe that backup truck fulfills that rest while that is being taken care of, so that at all times, street sweeping is occurring. So that's, what is that backup truck being used for? Is just backup, like if one goes down, or is it backup to replace a malfunctioning truck or anything?
For any reason, just that backup sweeper, the backup sweepers are there to make sure that the routes are completed within the posted time if one of them goes down for any reason. Also, we have to be mindful of our services. This season affect our performance greatly. For example, you have a track during the summer months, which are the lighter season, that can be swept, for example, in two hours. Come December, November, or January, when it rains, or we have the leafy season, that same area could take almost 60% more time to complete because of the volume of the debris, you have to go dump and return more frequently. So again, there's a lot of elements that play a factor when it comes to sweeping operation, and those are the reasons why I looked the whole picture and then proposed the times that we proposed.
Now, you know, when you mentioned the five-hour, and you say that after the street sweeper passes by, they can park. Obviously, if you don't know if the street sweeper passes by, or you see a car and you think, you know, they must have passed by, and you go there, and then you get ticketed, that is a big concern, unless by chance, do you have a tracking app, like the residents can have on their phone, an app so that they can verify, oh, street sweeper already passed through, I can go ahead and park my car out?
No, our equipment, we don't have any such technology, or our equipment, our sweepers don't have with such technology, because, again, the sweeper, when it goes by, you'll see your street being clean, or you hear the sweeper going by, and those are indicators that the sweeper went by. However, we are not the enforcing agency, in a sense, maybe something like that. The parking enforcement could have to notify that enforcement is done for this area, as the sweeping is completed? I don't know. We're, we're street sweepers, we're not in the tech business.
No, I understand.
I'm, I'm just trying to be fair here, you know? We're simple people.
Yeah, it's just, I just, I know residents, because you don't hear it all the time, the street sweeper's passing by, especially depending on, you know, what you're doing in the house or whatever it is. So you can't always think, or just look outside and say, oh, it's clean, because it might have not been messy in the first place, so then, you know, that, that is not...
Again, it all, it all boils down to the same thing. We, as service provider, we need to make sure that we have or given enough time to complete our task. And the proposed hours and the numbers of equipment that's gonna be involved, it, this is what it requires for us to have the five-hour window to complete the route. Again, if you prefer four hours, maybe three different zones of four hours, that's gonna extend it even further. Now it's, instead of being an eight-hour window total or 10-hour window, it's gonna push to 12-hour window. So that's really gonna cause more restriction when it comes to parking times.
Last question, is it a standard for street sweeping? And maybe staff can also answer. What is the normal hours of street sweeper of closure that they normally do? Because I don't, I don't recall five hours, usually when I go to different cities to park for street sweeping, it's usually like a two-hour, four-hour, I don't think I've seen five, but...
I mean, currently, in the City of West Covina, some streets are posted. I mean, currently, in the city of West Covina, some streets are posted, and they're from seven thirty AM until three thirty PM, one shot. That's eight-hour window. We're trying to move away from that, because I don't think that is fair, and that's how you have it posted in the city. Probably seven to eight percent of the city is posted that way, from seven thirty AM to three thirty PM. And I think that's outrageous, it's unacceptable, flat out.
I know in my streets, I don't have signs posted, so I really don't know in places that I've seen in the city.
I know my street sweeping day, because I got a ticket when I moved to my community. But yeah, it is around four and five hours, and it's the day after trash pickup, so...
Okay, before I get to Mayor Protem, just, I want to be clear to residents, because you kind of brought up a couple scenarios, you know, so you're kind of asking something unreasonable of residents when the summer, they can park maybe after two hours, and then, but they need to know in the winter, actually, it might be four hours. So just to be clear, the reality is, if we put no parking seven to noon, it's no parking seven to noon, right? I don't want to give residents this idea that, hey, you know what, no, actually, it's only seven to eight, trust us, you know, I think, I think we need to just be clear as a city, but it says seven to noon, it's seven to noon. And, you know, if you luckily saw the street sweeper go by and then decide to park, but I think as a city, let's not give that impression, because again, you're asking a lot of people to, in the summer, know it's a two-hour clean, but then in the winter, it's a four-and-a-half hour, and then, all of a sudden, in November, they get a ticket, and they're like, wow, I always park here at nine o'clock. It's like, oh, well, you know, we didn't get to you till eleven, because it was extra leafy. Like, I guarantee we're gonna have a lot of public comment that day.
So again, I'm only sharing my experiences with you. I'm not saying how it should be done, by all means, I'm just sharing my experience.
Mayor Protem Lu.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I think the issue, just from the beginning, okay, the post time, that would be issue, okay, and how can we make a convenient for people park on the street, especially right now with ADU, this and that, a lot of places have that parking issue. And then we just mentioned, okay, on the apartment, okay, that they get more high-density living area, how we accommodate, okay, so parking is really genuine, like in trouble, okay, so how can we accommodate with the time, and make it a little bit shorter time? And if five hours too long, two hours too short, maybe we cut maybe four hours, I see most of cities about four hours. I think four hours makes sense, okay, and I think five hours a little bit long, okay, because seven to noon, okay, and so hopefully, okay, I think maybe, because I check around before this issue, I check around Temple City and other city, I see it's four hours. So I think four hours possible makes sense. Two, three hours may be a little bit tight for you guys to really fighting for that time, and we don't want to fly through, and we want them really clean the place. So possible, okay, seven to eleven, okay, and then, okay, maybe twelve to, okay, what, four, so four hours, okay, and then with some other area, for example, okay, apartment area with the parking issue, then you guys can maybe change the different time for, make people can, maybe even shorter the time, okay, I don't know. You just mentioned about how we can accommodate some of the area, because all here is, we're talking about is the parking, and the parking is the issue, we cannot clean the street. So if we can make it kind of, okay, convenient for people to work together, we really want to clean the street, and we need to clean the street, okay, and in that way, people understand that we try everything to accommodate their need, that it will be easier.
Yeah, let me make a quick, yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure, make sure that we're all on the same page. We're here to serve the city, we're all here to serve the residents. Our recommendation, staff's homework, our homework, is just a proposed plan. If the city would like to see four-hour windows, just allow us the time to go back to our drawing boards, because the daily route is not gonna shrink, by all means. It's gonna remain the same because it's a zone that's selected day after waste collection. So now we're gonna have to look at that area and see how we can divide into four-hour windows, instead of two, five-hour windows, perhaps three, four-hour windows. So the impact is only four hours, not five hours. And also, the high-density areas, those are only four hours, and they're alternate at alternate day. So again, I'm here to assist. I'm here to listen, take your feedback, and then design a route.
So the four hours lay is possible?
It is possible, as long as it's divided equally. For example, when we divided the route into two zones, AM and PM, I will need five hours to complete those. However, the overall general area remains the same size, four hours wouldn't give me enough time to do each zone.
It doesn't matter, you can see, if you need approval, you need to make sure you're prime, okay, service, okay, and to service with a four-hours window, I think five hours a little bit too long for our resident, and so in that way, you guys have to go back to the drawing board to find the way to, let's, okay, interfere for people parking on the street, and this become an issue. And I think if we can accommodate the resident, I think they're willing to work with how we want to clean the street. So rather than with your convenience, but how about the resident's convenience? Okay, so this is my suggestion, okay, to work together, to make sure our resident, okay, parking on the street, and they understand we try to make sure you guys, okay, to cut the time, not just give a long time and people cannot park there.
Let me get Councilman Cantos, and then you can go ahead and share.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you so much. First question, just to answer possible resident sentiments as described earlier, about how some feel that it's okay to sweep mostly just two weeks in other parts of the city, except for high-density areas. What is the, your company's response to that, to explain to residents why it's important to go every week versus it being mostly okay for every two weeks, which is what some residents have said?
It's a common practice. If a city is set on a certain frequency, every resident get the equal amount of service. We can't recommend one end of the city to be only weekly, the other twice a month. It's not good practice, it's not fair. I believe the frequency throughout the city gotta be equal, and enforced equally, posted equally, and it's something that we haven't done, we won't do, we won't recommend, we always look for the fairness.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And the second question I have is, in light of what your concerns were with regard to performance, where you need that extra hour just to ensure that you get the job done in a proper way, can you, can you further elaborate about why shortening it to four hours could pose a problem? I mean, because I realize we need to make sure to optimize convenience for residents, and at the same time, if you can't do your job because of a cascading effect, because of something going wrong, then that could mean that there'd be low performance on, with regard to the street sweeping, which would defeat the purpose of why we're wanting to look at increases in the first place. So can you describe that further, please?
Absolutely. Again, the initial purpose was to divide the routes into two zones, AM and PM. And if we're going to divide into two zones that require five-hour window, however, that same area, we can divide it into three zones, and each zone will be four-hour window, then we can do it, because the zones would be a little bit smaller, and four-hour would be efficient time for us to complete the task. So again, if the goal is four hours, we can do it, it just gotta be smaller area, then instead of dividing a whole day's route into two zones, it will be divided into three zones.
So logistically, you're saying it is doable, then? I just wanted to make sure that it's not going to affect performance if we ask you to shorten it into four-hour time blocks with three zones versus two-hour time blocks with five, with five hours each?
Yes, absolutely, it can be done, it shouldn't hinder our performance, as long as the areas are proportioned large enough to complete it in that four-hour window, with enough cushion just for, you know, leaf season, or any kind of flat tire, things like that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So then, would a three-zone be like a seven-eleven, eleven-three, three-seven?
Well, what we'll do is, we'll overlap it, it'd be seven to eleven, and then from ten to two, and then would be from, let's see, one till three o'clock, that will complete pretty much. You know, the last section, we can shorten a little bit, instead of four hours, could give us three hours, as long as we have that ten-hour window to complete the route, so we can do four, four, and three, as long as we have that one-hour overlap, so that way we're not waiting for the posting, we can just continuously perform our work and move through the routes. It can be done, by all means, and it's not gonna affect anything on our operation, or the costs, or anything like that, it's just how it's divided. If the city chooses the four-hour window over five hours, by all means, I'm here to accommodate that.
Just, okay, I just...
Mayor Protem.
Quick follow-up, so you have surveyed entire street already, since you've surveyed our city for such a long time, so you survey, you survey entire street, okay, about what's the issue we have for each of street? And then you understand that is accommodate enough for four hours, so that will clean the street and everything, right? So you have a survey, and you understand...
Absolutely.
So you survey, you survey since what, fifteen years ago, right?
Perhaps a bit longer, yes.
Longer than that, so longer than that, so you've been with us, I remember you were weekly, and I remember that, okay, and I'm waiting for that after trash day, and then you guys will be cleaning my corner, I live in a corner lot on the, okay, between the Lock Island and Azusa, okay, so I remember that we can expect. Now, I don't even know when you're coming up, okay, and due to sometimes odd day, and this and that, twice a month, so you can see, and some streets really not clean. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one last question?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Cantos.
Earlier tonight, there were residents who expressed concerns in specific areas like Nogales and Santos, and plus, we also know of other places along North Garvey, with certain identified areas, as reported by residents. Would you, would you mind also reporting back to the city manager for her inclusion her report about those areas having been remedied with, with them being cleaned? I realize that you're going to clean the entire city rigorously, but because we want to make sure that we show that we are responsive to the residents' identified concerns, can you please make sure consciously to report back on those areas having been cleaned, to address the concerns that residents identified this evening?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just want to add on with Councilmember Canto regarding the some street, they have a lot of street have the issue, people littering, people litter, okay, hillside, and then some of the street, okay, some of the hillside, they have a view, and people came and they parked there, and they party there, and they throw all the trash. And then we have to call the city staff to clean the street numerous times. So just want to share with you, it's just very unbearable, just continue to talk, okay, request a public work staff to clean those street, okay, and this is really problematic, and due to the issue, a lot of street have the issue, okay, and this is the residential area, okay, just want to let you know, and how many people complain, and the issue we have, okay, again, Cento is major issue hillside, high out, okay, and all those street, okay, and no Garvey, okay, that is extremely filthy. Berenca on the bridge, okay, you can see all the debris, I don't know, have you ever show up, okay, I think you did, but people continue to, well, throw things on the, on the bridge. So just let you know, and that is why we're here today, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
I just want to bring up a few concerns that the resident brought up. So you know, some of them said they have seen street sweepers go fast, so I just wanted to know, well, residents would not like to know, if the sweeper goes past the ten-mile maximum that you set, and you have a tracker, does it automatically notify you at that moment, and then you can address it quickly?
Yes.
How does that work?
Yes, our sweepers are tracked every thirty-three seconds, so we get a ping on the equipment every thirty-three seconds, specifically designed for our needs, and we set boundaries, whether it's location, the speed, and so on. If it goes above ten miles an hour, while the brooms are down, we get a notification that while the PTO system is down and running, that means the broom is operating, the vacuum head is down, it goes above ten miles an hour, we get notified. However, if the broom is off, and the vacuum head is turned off, or the PTO engine is turned off, and it's traveling at a faster rate of speed, or the speed limit, that's fine, no problem there, we don't get pings back, ping back. We only get notification when the PTO system is on, that runs the actual sweeper portion of the equipment, and it goes above ten miles an hour, we get notified. Also, we have additional relays on the equipment, if the water system is off while the broom is running, we'll get notified. If the beacon lights, the emergency lights are not on while the broom is running, we'll get notified as well. So we have a lot of safety measures in place, and I don't want to admit publicly that I'm a micromanager, but I like to have good control. I've been a sweeper operator since I was sixteen years old, so I know what it takes to be a good manager, good operator, and have good values. We make our living based on our reputation, so I take every word, I overanalyze words, and yes, we do monitor them, and we do get notification.
Okay, I mean, that's good to know, I mean, if residents complain or says certain things, and you all, you have that tracking, or you can say, well, this time at nine-thirty, they went past, it's logged in, right?
Absolutely, and by all means, I'm very much hands-on. Our sweepers, they do have our office eight-hundred number displayed on them. I make time for everyone, every resident that we serve. Sometimes, the more they know about our equipment, the ability of our equipment, about our operation, the easier our jobs will become. I'm always available, so they can contact me at our eight-hundred number, I'm always available, I'll go out, I'll demo the equipment to them, because the residents who may express some concerns, once they have a better understanding, they become our mouthpieces, they become the ones explaining to others, so that way, they know about what we do, and what we're capable of, and what we're incapable of.
That's very good to know, thank you.
Sure.
The next concern that they had, I know they said sometimes when they street sweep, the debris still left, or it just scatters, and it's just still left there, they didn't really pick it up. How do you address that?
It's case by case. If the sweeper went over debris, it's gonna pick it up, no matter what. If there's a parked vehicle, and we went around it, and the vehicle's gone after ten minutes, twenty minutes, and then they go out and they see debris left in one section, that doesn't mean we left it behind, that means we went around an obstacle, whether it was a parked vehicle, or anything as such. But the sweepers are maintained regularly, they're washed regularly, with all of our services in-house, all of you guys are more than welcome to visit my site, you'll be impressed, I assure you that. No, we take pride in our equipment, again, these equipment, they're not inexpensive, they're anywhere from four hundred fifty thousand up to five hundred thousand dollars each, so they're high-maintenance equipment, we take pride in them, we maintain them, we monitor them, we do routine inspection, daily inspection, so we make sure that the equipment are running to their optimum capacity and ability. What is the point of going out there to perform a task and not do it a hundred percent? We're one of those that, if we can do a hundred and ten percent, we do it. We're not the type that, if we can get by fifty percent, why do a hundred? We're not one of those. My guys are trained to do work properly and correctly, and showcase their work.
Well, thank you, I mean, that's why we're here, and these are the questions that the residents have, so with you mentioning that, they have the answer to their everyday question, and it's good to know that these equipment are tested to make sure that they do their job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for saying you don't have much high-tech, seems like you could add a GPS on there, and send a signal to, yeah, I think you kind of snowballed us a little bit there. Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. So you mentioned that we have about seven percent already, street sweeping, what is it, we have these posted no-parking signs, is that correct?
Correct, approximately seven percent of the city, it's posted that way from seven-thirty AM to three-thirty PM. I don't believe they're enforced, because we do not have parking enforcement following the sweeper...
Right.
...the time of sweep, so we do go around parked vehicles, even though the posts are up.
Right, so will these signs be changed?
Yes.
To reflect this new?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I wonder, our staff, are we gonna go around and cut these trees? Because you can barely see some of these signs on Garvey.
We will be going around and posting new signage, so that we can enforce the street sweeping, and when... sweeping and when necessary, make sure that new signage is visible.
Yes, yes. Okay, I just wondered. Thank you.
Yeah, before, I have a question of staff. I know there are other cities that do send text messaging or emails to residents on their street sweeping days. So I was hoping that that could be something we could look at as, as, as a city to notify folks that, hey, street sweeping is, is happening today, make sure you move your car in the time.
I'll look into that technology. But we will definitely be doing a program or campaign to notify our residents. The intent is not to, you know, I got you if the ticket day one. We want to educate them and inform them of the new changes to sweet stripping, what days and times. And we will be notifying them and there'll be a grace period where it'll be warnings and after that grace period, then we will start enforcing it with tickets. But we do want to work with our residents and making sure that they're aware of the street sweeping changes.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Yeah, I, for the streets that, I don't know, like Garvey or where they just have that wall where they can't park on the other side. I mean, I, I am concerned on, on the timing and everything for that, especially in the high density with families and they don't have nowhere else to move their vehicle. I just, for like the high density, that 7 o'clock in the morning might be like too, too early for them, especially if they have kids that they're trying to get ready, consider that. So I don't know if you've already considered that.
Yes, that is the reason why those high density areas I posted them were proposed from 10 AM to 2 PM. That way everyone's gone and before they return, we do our work and we like to be as invisible as possible and also not disturbed or restrict them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's important.
Also around the schools, we sweep pre 7 AM just to avoid the drop off and pickup hours. So we do accommodate around the schools as well and they'll be posted and handled appropriately.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Okay, and just follow, just may you just say about texting this and that? I think our website, we should provide information about when the trash collect, collection day, when the street sweeping on your street, okay? They should be typing, okay, I think we've been request and request that and, and another thing we need to notification, if we approve tonight to tell people, send a mailer, send the information about the new change and then we try to adjust, okay, the time, like what you're talking about, the apartment area to 10 to 2 or something, to adjust their time. And for some area, and we hope it's four hours, okay? So we don't disturb people too much about their, their parking. So in that way, they can move their car back for a couple, for four hours. So, so for that, okay, and are we done with discussion? And I want to move the motion to approve, but, okay, we want to four hours with the signage and accommodate with some different area, we just, you just mentioned different time. And another thing is we want accountability with termination cloud. If you don't perform, we could terminate your contract if with approve. Okay, so meaning we are going to follow you to make sure the street is clean.
That's fair.
Okay, so notification to the resident, okay, four hours accommodation for different area, okay, and that's my motion to approve, okay, the weekly street sweeping.
Second.
May I ask?
Are you okay with the four hour window?
Okay, yeah, we're all on the same page. Thank you. Yeah, again, we're here to accommodate as long as the working conditions and the hours are fair. Absolutely, sir.
Yes, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wu and a second by Councilmember Cantos. Councilmember Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to item number 10, consideration of resolution number 202393 approving the Calpers exception to the 100 day wait period. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Our acting police chief, Tony Cortina, will come up and provide a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, city staff and committee members. I'm here today to ask Council to consider adopting a resolution approving the Calpers exception to the 180 day wait period to immediately bring back recently retired record specialist, Annette Carlos, as a part-time retired new tenant. The West Covina Police Department Record Staff are directly responsible for the timely production of records to meet local, state and federal laws and mandates as well as meeting the police records needs of the public, which are all very critical of public safety duties. Our records division has currently experienced a staffing shortage with five vacancies. We've been actively recruiting and have been able to hire four new record specialists. However, the training for this will take several, several months for them to be completed and be fully capable on their own. The vacancies are making it extremely difficult right now for our existing records personnel to keep up with the workload demands of the division and importantly, to stay in compliance with state and federal requirements. The shortage of personnel is also making the training of our newly hired personnel to fill the current vacancies extremely challenging while managing the workload of their day-to-day Per the California Government Code, a retired person shall not be eligible to be employed pursuant to this section for a period of 180 days following the date of retirement unless the employer certifies the nature of the employment and that the appointment is necessary to fill a critically needed position before 180 days have passed and the appointment has been approved by the governing body with the employer in a public meeting. We are at a very critical state of affairs now with our records personnel. In this case, Ms. Carlos has a specific skillset with over 22 years' experience in records and she also has the skills and experience in processing records in response to time-sensitive court requests and public records acts, requests, excuse me. And Ms. Carlos also has the skills and the tenure necessary to mentor our newly promoted trainers and help provide training to our newly hired staff members in the Records Bureau. So the vacancies combined with Mrs. Carlos's retirement creates a critical need to fill this position before the 180 days have passed. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Move the motion to approve.
Second.
Rock, paper, scissors. I'm just kidding.
Rock, paper, scissors.
I'm just kidding.
We'll, we'll give that one to.
By Mayor Protem Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Tabata, Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
All right.
Good night.
So we are now to city council reports. Any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports? No, okay. Any city council request? I know I have two, but Mayor Protem Wu, go for it.
I just want to, thank you, Mayor. Okay, I just want to follow up, okay, the tragedy we had, okay, and regarding in such a, in two weeks, we have four fatality of motorcycle, okay? And I think we should, okay, accept, okay, the suggestion from the Black Widow group and regarding in that intersection of Westport and Ama to put a plaque for that three person, okay? And regarding even their pictures, regarding awareness of motorcycle riders, be careful on the people, okay? And so, so my, my mother may I is to follow through and to talk to the family and to put this awareness and plus the plaque in the intersection. So at the same time, we want the trans tech to look into the improvement of the intersection, including the crosswalk, okay, with maybe light. So in that way, because this is downhill, is extremely, okay, and problematic and the people don't see it and people possible speeding. So this is my mother may I.
Can I add to that?
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I'm just wondering, when you look at, for trans tech, when you look at all these, is it, are you only focusing on just the lights, the, the street, well, yeah, the streetlights? Do you also take in consideration of the streets, how many lanes or versus like one-way street or any, do you, I just wanted to know if, if that, yeah, full scope, not just turning a left turn, maybe we just need to make that into a one-way street or maybe we just need to like just.
I can answer. So they do get a comprehensive review or analysis of that intersection. So it's not just a matter of an unprotected left turn or not, it's a complete analysis of that intersection.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Including pedestrian.
Yeah, my, my mother may I is about the plaque, okay, and to talk to the family and the awareness of motorcycle rider, okay? And that's mother, mother may I. And the traffic thing is just add on, we need to. So, so I, do I have a second?
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wu, a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. If I'm not hearing any objection from any council members, we can, we're good. Councilman Cantos, we're good.
I think we're good. I think there's consensus.
And don't forget, so regarding the plaque for that three young person, okay, and then awareness of the motorcycle riders and then we will talk to the family to let's see what they input and so we can put this thing together. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Cantos.
Wanted to, to support Councilwoman Lopez Viado with her mother may I. I don't know if that was formally adopted yet.
It was just, I guess, a question, but as our assistant, I mean, our acting city manager mentioned, Paulina, right, that, that's a full scope. So that wasn't a, I didn't have to mother may I that one.
No.
Okay. All inclusive, okay.
Okay, okay, great. Well, then I, I have one just as, as it's more of a procedural matter. If the staff would be willing to sort of set a procedure for how we reach out to families who, who are affected by tragedy, as the acting city manager knows, whenever we, she texts or emails, I always write asking, well, what can we do for the family? And it's usually, you know, well, we'll let you know. But if there's a way that we can formalize something to reach out to the, these families who are impacted by things that happen to them here, it, it would be really important because we're not just a city, but we're a town of people who care about each other. And if there's a way we can systemically reach out to people who need us, that way they don't just, we don't just see them here coming to meeting, but we, we can reach out to them individually, then I think it'd be great for us to do if we can do that.
Yeah, fantastic.
I was second that, okay? I think we, I went to couple of family and because I asked for chief, police, fire chief, police chief to have information, but hopefully we can automatically receive the family so we can reach out to them because we, we don't know who they are, okay? And we don't get information. It's not like we don't care. I think we care right away when this thing happened. I think all the council already jumping all the places, try to find out why. And so we, we really care about, okay, our resident at the same time, how can we reach out to them? Okay, and especially today, we have another fatality on the Benson and Pendero, okay? And, and that's another tragedy. So we need to reach out their family. I think, okay, that then they deserve our concern and our condolences, okay? And so we, we, we don't want them just a number. I think there's a human being, a person. So, so I think there's something I fully suppose, okay, Councilman Cantos to see, we can receive the information, then we can send a condolence or even visits to their family. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you. If I could add to both, including Councilman Cantos's request, I'm not sure if there's, I know sometimes they have the, I forgot that word. Forget, I forgot that word. But where a protocol is when, you know, police or fire, when they go on the scene, a tragic incident does occur, I know sometimes families does not want to be notified, does not want to deal with council, but if, if it's something that they can just add on our protocol, is it okay if the council reaches out so that the department can automatically give us the information? I know they give us the notification of the tragic events, but no additional information and sometimes we reach out, but it should be as a council as a whole that this occurred, family, you know, doesn't mind reaching out. But at the same time, I want to be courteous because if we all reach out individually, you know, it could be overwhelming versus just one time and just, yeah, it needs to be united together. Yeah.
And I want to, can I assist?
Mayor Protem Wu.
So much, Mayor. Okay, and I want to follow through, okay? And we have a tragedy of fire of grandma and two children, okay, in the Ama similar area and that, that's extremely tragic, okay? And I, I remember I went in the morning to there and, but we don't know where is the surviving family that we want to send our condolences, see what the city can help them. And again, the information is needed, okay, see, the city need to extend the hand, okay? I think we, we, we did the GoFundMe, okay, to help the family, but how the city can help those family, they kind of off place, okay? Because the house get burned down. And it is a tragedy with grandma with two kid, okay, two grandkids, I said, and, and it's so sad, okay? And that is a kind of fire trap, if you want to see it. So, so again, I, I think there's something we really care, we really want to extend our hands, see what we can help. So I, I think that we all agree, this is something important for us. But again, we don't want to overwhelming them, we just want to united a city to see maybe what we can assist them. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I, I think we're in consensus to create a protocol so we, we can handle these tragedies systematically and, and make sure that families are supported. All right. So I, I have two mother may Is dealing with how we run our meetings. You know, first, the first one is I, I want to propose that we move the city manager report before public comment. I think oftentimes people come up to public comment and the city manager actually has the response in the, the report. And I just think for flow of meeting, it makes sense that after presentation, that the city manager report then comes and then we open up to public comment just in case people want clarification on something on the city manager report, maybe with something presented they didn't understand or something that they wanted more detail on. And then afterwards, the city manager can then respond. And so that's, that's the first one.
So I have a motion by Mayor Calderon Tabatabai. Do we have a second?
Second.
The second by Cantos.
I'm not trying to against your mother may I, but I just have a concern because, okay, I, I'm not trying to debating over here, this concern I have is, okay, if it's broke, why we fix it? Okay, because you see our manager report is show and sweet about what the city had done. It is not answer, okay, the, the person, okay, or the people come over here to have a concern. So I think that flow should be after, okay, and over communication and the city, okay, manager respond to the concern and then, then talk about what the city have done these two weeks. So in that way, it's not ahead of time. It's because the more about the city manager talking about what these two week have been done, okay? And if you put it in front, then city manager become ahead of us, sound like she's running the city, but don't forget, she's running the city under the city council of description and the request. So, so that's why I have a kind of concern about that. So I understand the flow, but if, if this flow currently working, why we want to move that thing in the front? So that, that is my.
Yeah, yeah. So to, to respond to that, because the city manager report is providing information to, to, to the residents, this gives an opportunity for residents either to, to not give the public comment that has already been responded to by the city manager, which has happened quite a few times while I've been on the council, where the city manager says, well, actually it's in my report. says, well, actually, it's in my report, I'll be getting to it. But it also gives, gives the public the opportunity, after seeing a city manager report, to possibly speak. And because we allow our city manager to respond to comment, it would give them an opportunity to either clarify or to expand on what was reported. Because when the city manager gives the report after public comment, the public never really gets to speak to the city manager report. The city manager report is not on like the agenda, it just says city manager report. So people don't know what's on it, they don't know what's going to be presented. And so if there's something on the city manager report that does spark interest, people have to wait two weeks to maybe respond to that. And again, because this forum really is for the public, I feel that it makes, it's in the best interest of the public to hear the city manager report before they get public comment. Councilman
Santos?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with the sentiments of this, because it's a way to build clarification, and it also creates more of a flow. Because if the city manager's report comes first, then when during their public comment, they can address that, or it'll, it'll prevent the kind of dynamics that you've, that you've been describing.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I mean, it's fine if the city's looking into, I just don't want to disrupt, like, you know, routine that everybody's used to. I mean, if most cities, just like in other cities, other meetings that I attend to, there's always a flow, like they open it up, and then public comment, and then go on. But if it's for the city to look into that, I just, what the standard is, you know, and the community and everybody's used to the routine, then, I mean, well, the mother may I is for just the city to look into that. Right?
Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, mayor. So you're saying start the meeting with, after the acknowledgements, then the city report from the city manager?
So-
And public comments, and then the city manager will respond to the public comments?
Yeah, so currently, right now, we do presentations, then we go public comment, then the city manager responds to public comment, and then the city manager goes into their city manager report. So I would just move the city manager report to before the public comment.
So do we have any objection? Okay, any other objection? Is this for, for the city to look into, just to look, mother may I, just to look into? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, what we'll do is we'll, we think it's a good idea to put this in a resolution to bring back for your consideration. So that will be presented to the council, you can vote it up or down at that time. But we'll do the order, and so every time council wants to change it, we'll come back to that resolution, and we'll change the order if the council wants to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem Wu?
Now, I'm trying to be disrespectful, but I just, okay, it's am broke, why fix it mentality, okay, so, so that's why I don't want to waste my personal seat, I don't want to waste the staff time to do resolution, and then, and then we have to debate with this very small issue. Okay, so, and so that's why I cannot support this mother may I. But I think you have a good point, okay. But just so you understand, I give you much true-
Oh, yeah.
The thing. Okay, thank you.
No, I understand, and I guess this comes to my second request, because I think there has been things that have been broken in the meetings, and it's some of the public comment. And I have spoken with other, other cities and other mayors and councils, and the way other cities have done it, and this comes to my second request, is that they've actually broken up their public comment. And so at the beginning of the meetings, public comment can only be made on agenda items. And so you have your first public comment, and you can only speak on agenda items. And if anyone during their public comment speaks on an item that is not on the agenda, then you have the ability to stop them and tell them, you can't speak now, you have to wait till the end of the meeting. And then they have another public comment session at the end for non-agendized items. And I think this way, for the city to get their, our business done, and to get it done in an efficient way, so people who are watching on YouTube, they're seeing the business of the city being done. And that way, you know, people who want to speak on non-agendized item will have an opportunity. But just like right now, we are speaking on things that are not on the agenda, comes at the end of the meeting. So that way, people get the agenda, they show up because they think that agenda item is important, and they can see it, they can hear public comment on it, and then they can leave. And then people who want to speak on non-agendized items can come and speak after the meeting, or at the end, just as we are doing now. Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you, mayor. Actually, when it was my, when I was mayor, I thought of the exact same thing. However, you know, talking to residents like today, it's 11:15, if our meeting is done at 12, the residents would have to wait. So all the families that were here today would have to wait till 11 o'clock. And so I didn't want to suppress those with families, children. And again, it goes back to routine that they're set, this is the time, I'm done, I don't have to wait this whole night, especially if I got to put the kids to sleep, or I have to work early, or whatever reason, and it's not consistent of when the end time will be. So I do have a little bit of an issue with that one. I'd like, you know, the residents to get that out of the way too, and bring up their issues and concerns like this.
No, and, and I was thinking about that before I brought the agenda item up. And one of the things that we always have the power to do is to move things up, like a night like tonight, where we had quite a few people reach out, this, this would have been an opportunity where we could have said, do I have consensus that we move non-agendized public comment to the front? And we, we always have the power to do that. It's just because in our normal meetings, it really isn't, isn't something normally that would happen like tonight. And normally, what ends up happening is we do have an hour of public comment that keeps us from doing the city's business. And it does impact, I mean, we get a lot of complaints about residents who either don't want to show up, or they, they're like, hey, you know what, that we didn't even get to see the, the business of the city, because by the time you guys even got to it, it was, it was done. Councilwoman Diaz?
So, so you want to do, you want to have public comments, or before public comments, you want to have city manager's report, that's the first mother may I, and then public comments, and then only public comments pertaining to the agenda?
Yes, three, three-minute-
Oh.
Public comment-
Going to come to-
Or agenda item.
Five minutes, and then five minutes at the end? That's 10 minutes.
No, it was going to be three minutes on agenda items only, and then at the end of the meeting would be three minutes on non-agendized.
So you're limiting there.
Yes, Mayor Protem Wu?
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think the concern is that we have to endure a lot of repetition of comment, attack, this and that, et cetera, et cetera. But the issue I worry, because we, we have a lot of time, we have our residents, especially senior, they came over here, and they want to address their issue. And that is how the overall communication about. Overall communication is for any resident concerned about their issue, and they can have result, and they came over here and talked to us. For them, all these senior or family with kid, for them, for them to wait for the end of the, like right now, 11, 11:20, it is almost impossible, okay. So, so that is one issue. But I agree with you, because you use, you see an hours of repetition of attack, any of the our council member. But is that the freedom of speech? So, so we endure for before, but we don't want to discourage for some people, really, all the time, they came over here with their issue. Remember, they talk about traffic issue, they talk about their tree issue, they talk about their pothole issue, they talk about their public safety issue. And for those people put at the end, it's almost impossible for them to stay this late.
Yeah, so my thinking on this is, is one, you know, the main purpose is to get the, the business of the city done. But two, when those comments are made at the beginning of the meeting, right now is our time to then do request, mother may I's, to get those put on future agendas. And what often happens is, those comments made at 7:30, well, now we get to 11, those are not front of mind for us to, to then put on an agenda. And so, again, I mean, I understand, right, there's the, the give and take, right, oh, they got to wait to the end. But if they speak to us now, before we're making our request, well, now we can then make those requests to put it on the agenda, versus when they speak it at the beginning, oftentimes, those things get lost. And so again, I'm just really trying to think about what's the most effective timing on a, on a meeting to then get the best results for, for, for all, all residents, and to get the issues solved. Councilman Santos?
Mr. Mayor, I think that your solution, I mean, it, it allows people to have their freedom of speech, which we all have to protect. But the way that, and the way that you're proposing it, we get the business done of what is on the agenda for people to speak on that, and then we get through that. And then, when folks have concerns, then they can bring that up. And then when they bring that up at the end during comment, then when, at the end, when they, when there is, they just made their comments that may not, of items that may not be on the agenda, we could say, well, this was just brought up two minutes ago, it's a good idea, let's add a mother may I, or let's put this on a future agenda. If it's at the beginning, this has happened to me, where I've heard of residents making a comment, and I thought, okay, I'm going to ask as a mother may I later, and then darn it, I forgot, you know. And so I think that this, your idea is a way to get the business done, so that way people who have, have input regarding agenda items can get that done, we can address that and hear that. And then for people who want to say whatever they want to say otherwise, then they can still do that, they still have their freedom of speech. But then, by then, we've already conducted our business. So that way, those who want, who are here to hear the business of the meeting with agenda that's posted, we could get all that done. And then for those who want to stay, then they still have that opportunity. So I'm fully in support of that.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I personally just feel really bad for the residents when you tell them, to come to the council meeting alone is already hard for them, one. And then especially, you know, here goes with the dial-a-ride, the rides and everything. When there's not a consistent time, like, okay, what time can I speak? Because sometimes they work around that, well, what time can I speak? And here, it's easier, it's like, okay, 7 o'clock, the beginning. You'll probably be longest an hour, an hour and a half. But when you tell them, oh, it's at the end, but there's no time, and then I can see a lot of residents come and complain, and, and just argue and fight, and just say, well, I thought it was going to be done, and, you know, I didn't get a chance, it's already midnight, I had to go home, and I just feel bad. If you want to address the mother may I, then the mother may I could be moved up after the public comments. That is another solution for that, that issue, to address those that it's still fresh. And I, and I understand what Councilman Santos says, but for the residents, or for anybody, what time can I speak? That, everybody needs that time, it's like a clock in, even work and stuff, they, they need a set time. Otherwise, it confuses, or they'll just be upset. Moving, moving things, inconsistency, that, that's the biggest thing that I, I feel bad for the residents. Because like I said, I wanted to do what you're doing. And then my second thing is the agenda items. How many residents, when they come to talk about the agenda items, they go off tangent, they just, they use that agenda items to throw in their non-agenda items, and it's like, come on, agenda items. So, but my, my concern is letting the people speak, and giving them that, a set time, and not for us to pick and choose. And they'll say, well, you let them move theirs up here, and then you didn't allow us. So-
No, those-
Do you get one or two residents that come for, to express their-
Oh, those are very, very, very good points. Mayor Protem Wu?
Thank you, mayor. And I think, okay, the same concern I have, and I will stick with, because I've been seeing so many of our senior resident came over here, and then they drew from far away, from south side, from east side, from west side, came over here and wait, and now we want to wait till the end of our meeting, like right now, it's impossible. And we really want to encourage people come to talk to us freely, freedom of speech. And for people to sit, come in the, okay, overall communication, attack, we have to take it, okay? This is freedom of speech too. So in that way, okay, we don't because we have an issue with that, okay, and we worry about that wasting our energy and time. But we lose the people that, that willing to come to talk to us, and to solve their issue. And I think we are here, it's to solve people's issue, okay, and to see what their concern. And that's why we sit over here. So, so I really, okay, I know where you're coming from, I agree, okay, I want to streamline too. But at the same time, which one is much more important, the freedom of speech, okay, have people to talk, or try to just streamline? And I will stand behind the freedom of speech for people to come to talk to us freely, and to support, okay, and to solve their issue. So, okay, just so you know, this is how I stand.
No, and, and I think these are all valid points, and, and, you know, I can, you know, Councilwoman Lopez Viado, you know, mentioned how she had thought about it as well. And, and, you know, I think, like I said, these are all valid points. And again, I am thinking about what is in the, in the best interest of getting the business done, the concerns we've heard from residents about what public comment, when it's not non-agendized, and them not showing up, and the business of the city not getting done. I think those, those weigh heavy on me. And I also understand, you know, people being able to email and things like that. But I'll actually, because I don't think there's going to be the support, I think, yeah. Okay, yeah, let's go ahead, we'll, we'll take the vote.
I'll take a vote. Councilman Santos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
We voted on one, right? This is for the public comment.
Second, no.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado? Sorry, no. Mayor Protem Wu?
Nope.
Mayor Calderon Tapata by?
Aye.
Item fails, mayor 3-2.
Okay. Thank you, and, and great, great discussion, by the way. So, we, any other council comments? No?
Well, actually, I do. I just wanted to thank everybody. You know, I worked there in the morning, and I was there till the end of the biggest toy giveaway ever. I actually had one of our senior lead in LA told me, man, what, what happened on Sunday? It was just, the lines were long. I saw the aerial view from the fire, fire department, who showed the drone. The cars went all the way to Covina and Irwindale. But thankfully, our city staff, we opened up extra booth, we opened up 10, just to kind of get those toys getting out instead of the four booth area. And I just, I'm very proud of the city, the maintenance, the fire, the police, and how we all work together. Of course, big thanks to councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, big thanks to Commissioner Brian Gutierrez for bringing all this to our city, and he actually took the lead. And I know he worked hard, because we, I mean, I worked with him, we had night meetings and everything, and we, but he obviously took on more because of the connections and the follow-ups, and we had the meetings. But it was just so amazing to see everyone work together, and, you know, we fed the volunteers, there was tons of volunteers. We did have minor issues, you know, people who want to cut, fight for the toy. And then just to let everybody know, we did cater to those who didn't have a vehicle. So we had a lot of walk-up. We gave them all toys, those who took the bus, and those who walked up. So I just want to let everybody know, it wasn't just vehicles. And that, there was 19 pallets with 8,000 toys. So we all worked together, and it was just, it was positive, everything went well. Towards the end, when there was a line, there was this brand-new Rolls-Royce that cut right in front, and they're honking. It was wild. It was beautiful, and it's like, does this car really need a toy? But it, it cut, and, you know, they're mad, they're honking. We see it right in front, and I'm like, oh, no, not in our city. So, you know, we went in front of the, the gentleman, which is the volunteers that Brian brought in, he's like, don't worry, I got it. And he stopped them, nope, you out. And then the car that was behind honking at him, he was all, thank you, like, yeah, we're going to do it right, no cheating here. But Rolls-Royce in our city, you know, it was huge, like SUV type of thing. But it, the event went well, everyone was happy, you know, Santa, Mickey, Minnie, and it went smooth, we didn't have any, like, major issues. we didn't have any like major issues, and we didn't only just take care of West Covina, we took care of, you know, other cities, like this lady who did a walk-up, she's from La Puente, so we had different cities, but it doesn't end there, it's like, again, like the gift of giving, we packed the canine, the bear, bear cat, I was calling it bobcat, but it's the bear cat, and that, those toys will go through those canine program that we have in a few weeks, where they hand select residents of West Covina, those who are at low income and at need, and they actually deliver not just one or two toys, but I, I did the ride-along last year, it's a box, and so they get the child's, you know, age, gender, what they like, so that they can get them the things that they like, and then the teenagers, because teens don't play with toys anymore, they give them gift cards, so that, it continues on, and then of course, we have a shop with a cop event that's coming up, again, to those, we work with the West Covina foster and homeless children, so this whole month is literally the gift of giving to all the children at need, so I know the kids in our city are just probably the happiest ever in this time of month. So I just want to thank the staff, thank everyone out there, and everybody did a great job, IT as well, he filmed it, put it together, and so everybody did their part, and everybody had like, if they saw a deficiency somewhere, like, maybe we could do this, okay, perfect, we'll, we'll change things around, so it was great, it was a fabulous event, tiring, but well worth it, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cantos.
Just congratulations to councilwoman Lopez Viado for, I mean, your, your leadership in, in partnership with Brian Gutierrez and others and all these partners, it's really awesome, just the way that you keep making a difference, it is just incredible to behold, to just watch the magnitude of this, so that's just awesome what, what you helped to do.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, mayor, Letty and Brian Gutierrez, you guys did a fabulous job, fabulous, it was wonderful. I wish I was a kid, I mean, there were so many toys and so many people, I mean, it was really, really a nice event, I just, I want to thank you, I think you're right, I mean, it was councilman Cantos, her leadership was wonderful, both, you know, Brian and Letty were, they did a great job, thank you.
No, yeah, I just want to reiterate, it was fantastic, and everyone was so happy, and it was, it was a beautiful event, and so this concludes our meeting, is there anyone who'd like to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
All right, meeting adjourned, have a good night.